Okay.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, the hour of 7:30, the hour of 7:30 having arrived, and a majority of the council being present, will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(coughing) By the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if we could take a brief moan of silence for all those who have passed in our community since our last meeting, especially our veterans. Thank you. All right, before we get going, I just want to announce here, Mr. Souza, precinct seven representative, could not be here physically this evening. There's a family situation, and he has to be away to help deal with that in other part of the country. And so he requested that he be able to participate remotely via the order 02016028 that we approved last December. In that order, we stated that permissible reasons for remote participation include allowing such participation if a member's physical presence at a meeting is prevented due to a family or other emergency. It is at the sole discretion of the Chair to approve such request, and the Chair's decision is not appealable. In making this decision, I've taken the following factors into account: the specific challenges you and we face to attend all or part of this meeting; the relative importance of items on our agenda to be discussed and decided upon, including but not limited to any zoning issues that are coming before us; the council's ability to provide you access to meeting materials while you're attending remotely. You've made this request in as timely a manner as you could. I find that you do have a family emergency that requires you to be physically unable to attend our meeting on Tuesday, and given the factors I cited above, I find that it is appropriate and important to allow you to participate remotely at this Tuesday's meeting. Therefore, I'm approving your request and asking that the Town Manager and Council Clerk make sure that we have technology in place for Tuesday's meeting that allows Mr. Souza to hear and be heard by the audience in the council chambers. I also note to the Council Clerk, the section under Procedures for Remote Participation, especially two sections: at the start of the meeting, the Chair shall announce the name of any member who will be participating remotely and the reasons under 940 CMR 2910-5 and this policy. I believe I've done that. And two, that all votes taken during any meeting in which your member participates shall be by roll call vote. So everything we do tonight, we're going to call the roll. Usually, we have voice votes, but everything we do tonight, we're going to call the roll. This is the first time we are applying this order at council level, and it's important that we strictly adhere to the policy, the state regulations allowing it, and the open meeting law. So, that, Mr. Souza is on the phone. I believe we tested that he can hear us, and he can be heard by us. So with that said, I wanted to let everyone know that, so that we have that, and also, of course, that we're, as always, being taped by BTV or the viewing pleasure of Bridgewater and the rest of the internet who finds it. Moving on, we'll go to approval of minutes from the previous meeting, November 21, 2017. Is there a motion?
No move.
Made by Mr. George.
Second.
Second by Mr. Haley. Is there discussion, Mr. George?
No.
Mr. Haley?
None.
Mr. Souza?
No.
All right, we'll take a roll call vote then.
Yes.
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 Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
In favor, none against.
Thank you.
A question, Mr. President?
Yes.
While I firmly believe that is Mr. Souza on the phone, and since this is our first time doing this, how do we prove that that is actually Frank?
Frank, tell us something only you know.[317.02][317.02](laughter)
Frank, do you like trees?
Mr. Ward?
Okay.
I want you to know that four of the trees we talked about before have been cut down.
Thank you. That is definitely Frank. Let's proceed.[333.31][333.31](laughter)
Thank you. All right, moving on, another announcement from the President. We have tentatively scheduled, and I believe Mr. Dolan has confirmed this, we will be meeting with the joint meeting with the Town Council, Town Manager, School Committee, Finance Committee, et cetera, that is mandated by the Charter at the beginning of the year, and we will be doing that in our first meeting in January on the 20th, on January 9, 2008. So we will be doing that. There were no proclamations. I'd ask, I'd ask the council's pleasure on moving item F forward or not. Is there a motion to take item F out of order, or are we just going to move to Citizens' Forum? All right, seeing no motion, we'll move on to Citizens' Forum. Anyone from the public, just come up, identify yourself for the record, and say what you have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name's William Scanlon from 60 Stony Brook Drive, I've submitted a letter to Town Council and to all members of Town Council. I'm going to read it into the record. This is directed to Attorney Rollins. I'm writing to you on behalf of myself as a concerned citizen of Bridgewater, as a member of Bridgewater Cares, and as an attorney for Bridgewater Cares. Bridgewater Cares and I appreciate the hard work and often thankless work that Town Council undertakes for Bridgewater. We also understand that Town Council is searching for avenues to generate more tax revenues for our community. However, expanding the recreational marijuana industry in our town is in direct contradiction with what Bridgewater's no vote in question for stands for, and is not in the best interests of our community. First and foremost, it has been clearly, loudly, and repeatedly demonstrated at the citizen open forums that the voters and citizens of Bridgewater are completely opposed to any expansion of the recreational marijuana industry. While we applaud Town Council for banning retail recreational marijuana sales in our town, we do not want recreational marijuana cultivation, manufacture, and testing to be allowed in Bridgewater. All of the townspeople who have attended hearings, filled the hearing room, spoken before Town Council during the entire public forum process, have all spoken in opposition to any expansion from medical marijuana to recreational marijuana. In fact, only two people have ever spoken in favor of it, those two individuals being the owners of the RMDs, Theory Wellness, and Alternative Compassion Services. As is explained in detail below, we demand a legal opinion from you, Attorney Rollins, as Town Council, as to the legal effect and legality of the amendment being voted upon tonight. An ordinance D-FY18-005 was originally proposed and intended to prohibit all aspects of recreational marijuana in Bridgewater. Through the amendment process, we now find ourselves with the current language of 6.4 marijuana establishments forbidden and exceptions. The town of Bridgewater prohibits the operation of any marijuana establishments as defined in GL Chapter 94G Section 1 in all zoning districts of the town of Bridgewater, with the exception of marijuana cultivators, marijuana product manufacturers, and marijuana testing facilities. This prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes licensed under Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012. As to the legal effect, we wish an answer on one: does the legal effect of the amendment currently before Town Council for vote this evening only prohibit the retail sale of recreational marijuana? Two: does the legal effect of this amendment remove the prohibition of the cultivation, manufacture, and testing of recreational marijuana in Bridgewater? Three: does this ordinance, in the opinion of the town, allow RMDs in Bridgewater to expand and commence recreational growing operations? Four: as was decried by the public at the Town Council hearing on November 21, would such an expansion allow these RMDs to sell this recreational marijuana to other cities and towns that have not prohibited recreational marijuana sales? As a concerned citizen and as an attorney for Bridgewater Cares, we demand that you explain in detail and in writing the town's position on the legal effects of this amendment. Since no one has heard your professional legal opinion on these matters, and since you will not be able to respond in writing today, I feel it is paramount that you at a minimum address these questions this evening prior to the Town Council's vote on this ordinance. Secondly, and more importantly, as to legality, based on the legal research conducted, we believe that the amendment to ordinance D-FY18-005 to expand and allow RMDs to cultivate, manufacture, and ultimately sell recreational marijuana to other towns is illegal and against public policy. Specifically, the amendment, as it currently appears before you tonight, is in direct conflict and contravention of both Massachusetts state law and Bridgewater's zoning ordinances.
Hey, Mr. Scanlon, we're up to four minutes here, so if you could just give the, we've got it, we'll put it with the Town Clerk, the Council Clerk, so she has it for the record. I'll do what we need to do by our rules, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else for public forum? Ms. Neary.
Yes. Good evening. Again, I want to thank you for all your time that you give to the town. We realize it's a huge commitment. And you have my name and address? Thank you. And I want to thank you for agreeing that a marijuana ban on retail sales is good for our community. So I think you've done the right thing as far as that goes. Now if you can move forward without that illegal amendment, which if it is allowed, would not restrict the cultivators, the product manufacturers, or testing facilities to any particular area. The amendment was very loose, with faulty language, and it didn't identify where these facilities could take place. Only medical marijuana facilities are addressed in the ERO regulation. Many other towns, even towns that voted yes, are trying to protect their communities. You really have to take into account the families that have made their homes on Elm Street for decades, and I know that you know those families. There's the Duboards and the Holmes. They're the established families in that area. And also, other newer families have their life savings tied up in their homes. Medical marijuana facilities will have plenty of business, so don't think they need your help. And they will continue to pay their real estate taxes. They are not the pot of gold you hoped for. There is no sales tax on resale products. It is collected on the end user, unless there's an exception for marijuana that I'm not aware of. Just try to do the right thing for your community. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Neary. Other folks for public forum? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sullivan.
Taylor Sullivan, 215 Newland Park. First off, I wanted to thank you, those that had already recommended a ban on retail sales. And I also want to thank the council in general for all the hard work you've done. Just going through this process and even researching retail sales myself as a citizen, I've realized how much work it takes and how much work you put into it. You know, you definitely should be compensated for the position far more than the $3,000 that I think was mentioned a few weeks back, being proposed. Over the last few months, people have come out in droves in support of a ban. We voted no on question four, which includes cultivation. As Attorney Scanlon just mentioned, the amendment is not legal. I even contacted the Attorney General's office, and it was confirmed that it is not legal. Therefore, it should be removed from part of the ordinance. We have had counselors, such as Bill Wood, recommend zoning marijuana sales to Elm Street. And just that fact in general, if you want to put marijuana on Elm Street because it's quote unquote "out of the way," doesn't that show that retail marijuana isn't positive for Bridgewater if we're trying to put it on a street that's out of the way and borders another town? This realization has not been lost on us, and I know that it hasn't been lost on you all. So I would just ask that you make the right decision, go for the ban on retail sales, and also, just keep in mind, we voted no on question four, and that includes cultivation. There hasn't been anyone up here that supports cultivation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Other public forum? Yes, sir.
Evan Maris, 80 Ledgewood Drive. Hey, just finishing off the attorney's statement that we all got. As to state law, this amendment would allow a currently existing RMD, Theory, and ACS to supply product to recreational marijuana establishments despite a no vote and opt-out from Bridgewater under question four. Leaving aside that fact, the Town Council, if they pass this amendment ordinance, would be completely ignoring Bridgewater's opt-out and no vote under question four. Ordinance D5DFY18005, as amended, cannot have legal effect and authorize recreational grow operations in Bridgewater. In Massachusetts, there is to be a virtual separation between recreational marijuana and medical marijuana. The regulations required by Chapter 55 and Chapter 55 of the Acts of 2016 GL C94G state and pretend part that requirements and standards sufficient to ensure for the virtual separation of marijuana cultivated, processed, manufactured, delivered, or sold by a licensee that is also licensed as a medical marijuana treatment center pursuant to Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012 or Chapter 94I. Such requirements shall leverage seed-to-sale tracking technology and may allow for the appropriate transfer or acquisition of marijuana seeds, clones, cuttings plants, or plant tissue between such entities. So a recreational marijuana establishment, including marijuana cultivators, marijuana product manufacturers, and marijuana testing facilities, which is also licensed as medical marijuana treatment center, may integrate cultivation, processing, manufacturing, et cetera, until the point of sale, where there is to be a virtual separation between medical use and adult use sales. But a medical marijuana treatment center, which Theory and ACS are, may not participate in the cultivation, processing, sales, et cetera, on the recreational retail side as they are regulated under 105 CMR 725, implementation of an act for the humanitarian medical use of marijuana. The Code of Massachusetts clearly states an RMD and medical marijuana treatment center must still abide by the regulations under 105 CMR 725.105, operational requirements for registered marijuana dispensaries, paragraphs B and N of this section. Clearly evidenced that any products produced for recreational use by marijuana cultivators, marijuana product manufacturers, and marijuana testing facilities in Bridgewater would thus be in violating of 725.105. Further, they would likewise be in contravention of Bridgewater's zoning ordinance. Section 21, and more specifically, Sections 21.03 Standards and Criteria, and 21.04 Cultivation Activities. In pertinent part, Section 21.03 states that medical marijuana treatment centers, aka RMD, one must comply with the requirements of 105 CMR 725, which, as explained above, it has clearly failed to do. Likewise, Section 21.04 prohibits cultivation even as an accessory used by a medical marijuana treatment center in any location other than where specifically permitted. Thus, as explained above, the language contained in ordinance D-FY18-005 does not specifically permit recreational marijuana cultivation, manufacture, or testing. Again, as a concerned citizen, as an attorney for Bridgewater Cares, we demand that you explain in detail and in writing the town's position on the legality of ordinance D-FY18-005 as amended, and whether a vote on the same would be improper since it is in direct conflict with state law. Please provide your professional legal opinion on these matters in writing to his office. Since you will not be able to respond in writing today, I feel it is paramount that you, at minimum, address these questions as to legality this evening prior to the Town Council's vote on ordinance D-FY18-005. Bridgewater Cares, the citizens of Bridgewater, and I oppose any recreational marijuana establishments in Bridgewater and urge the Town Council not to authorize any RMDs in Bridgewater to cultivate, manufacture, test, and/or sell recreational marijuana to other towns.
Wrap up, please. Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. I'm so glad to hear Mr. Scanlon's comments, because as a layperson, I wasn't saying it as eloquently, but my question has always been to the council, why you felt, or some of you felt, the need to include that amendment to the ban? It never was fully understood, so it's like, that's my question to you guys, why, gals, gals, guys, why you felt the need that we needed that? My other question, which has been kind of answered, is how does the state look at that? What is the laws with medical marijuana? I can't believe medical marijuana is allowed to cultivate for retail, because that kind of like, medical is separate. So I feel that we could have gotten just by fine by just banning it. You made it more complicated for yourself, for the town, by adding that amendment, and I plead with you to take it off, because it doesn't make sense. All I can picture is there'd be loopholes somewhere that if it's allowed, then there'll be a loophole. Somebody's going to figure out a way to push it forward, to make it retail, or say, well, if you allow that, you can allow this. And I don't agree with that. I totally want the ban. And just as one, he also said, I had, probably word for word, but in simple terms, I had the question, if you realize, not a single person came to support that amendment, and the only people that did were the two people that would be affected by it, would be the medical marijuana facilities. I need you guys to explain, the council explain, why it's a benefit to have that amendment. I don't see it, and I know everybody else doesn't, and they said it more eloquent than me, and there was certainly a lot of legalities, and that's all my questions exactly, were, you know, what is the legality of being able to do that? How is it going to affect, and why do we need it? And to zone it on Elm Street, you know, we have medical marijuana. That's fine. They're not going to, it just seemed fishy, that all of a sudden that was added, and whether or not it was something behind the scenes, other people, when I mention it, I don't solicit the comment. They make a comment like, gee, that sounds kind of odd. Why was that added? So if you can explain that in our meeting, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Further public comment? Dr. Curran.
Fred Curran, 77th South Street. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I too want to express my great appreciation for all the work that you've done over the last several months. It's been a long process, but I too want to extend my thanks to each of you. I'd just like to provide a brief overview of where we have been on this topic for the last several months, and just remind you, if I may, of the various people that have stepped forward to ask you to vote for the ban against recreational marijuana facilities. We have had distinguished teachers in our educational system. We've had the leader of our nursing system at the Bridgewater Rainham System. We've had retired Chief of Police stand against, stand for the ban. We've had the current Chief of Police stand for the ban. We've had numerous members of our police department and emergency services departments, the fire department, urge us to ban this substance. We've had business people stand up and very clearly say that they were opposed to having recreational marijuana facilities. And we've even had some medical people come forward and remind you of the negative medical effects that marijuana has on our young people and our young adults. And most importantly, I do want to remind you of the very poignant testimonies that have come forth in our chamber here, talking about people that use marijuana as a gateway drug, and then spent many, many years of their lives, to their own admission, wasted away because they started off with a gateway drug that led to harder drugs. Those are the most telling and compelling stories to support the ban on recreational marijuana facilities. So in summary, I think that from all the varied professionals and leaders, and oh, by the way, I'm sorry that I omitted our spiritual leaders in our community who have been unified in support of the ban. So you've got entire leadership groups from our community, different disciplines of our community, that are speaking very strongly in unison, in one voice, asking you to ban recreational marijuana facilities. If this was a National Basketball Association game, you'd call it a slam dunk. Please, please, support a complete ban on recreational marijuana facilities, and please do not allow Bridgewater to be known as the town that cultivates this substance and sends it out to reap destruction in other surrounding towns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Curran.[1600.41][1600.41](applause) Next, sir?
Putnam, 135 Pleasant Street. I'll be very brief.
The Council Clerk didn't get it.
I'll be very brief. I don't have anything prepared, and I know we don't like repetition here, but I can't say anything other than to repeat what I've said before and what other people have said before, especially as regards the cultivation language. It's got to be removed. I see no benefit to it, and as it turns out now, it appears to be highly illegal, and won't do anything good for the town. So if you could please do what's right, and strike that language, and let's just go for a complete ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Putnam. Other public comment? Just one second, Ms. Sullivan. Does anyone who hasn't spoken yet want to speak before Ms. Sullivan?
Sumner.
Oh, I'm sorry. You look, you look so much like her.[1655.51][1655.51](laughter) I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan.
It's okay.
You dress the same and everything. So if you could just identify yourself for the clerk.
Sure. Amy Sumner, 15 Old Cedar Village. Well, I'll be relatively brief tonight as well. You know, I pretty much fully support what's been voiced here tonight, particularly by Dr. Curran and Attorney Scanlon. I was out of the country for one week in the middle of November, so I was actually in Ireland when I found out about the amendment. And once again, I was, you know, pretty surprised because it seemingly came out of thin air, right? No one's come up here and advocated for that. As has been pointed out, it doesn't seem to have any legal backing to it. As a side note, I spoke separately to an attorney at the State House who also seemed to agree with that. And I guess I looked for minutes on the website to fully understand what the purpose of this was. There were no minutes posted. So what I've heard via word of mouth is that it seemingly came as a request of the Town Manager. So I guess the one thing that I would like to remind you all is that you were elected to the Town Council by residents of Bridgewater, the same residents who voted on November 8, 2016, with an 80% voter turnout, to vote against allowing recreational sale of marijuana in this town. So from where I'm standing, I don't see any situation where we don't honor that vote. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Sumner. Further public comment?
Mr. President, can I make one comment? I realize it's a little out of order, but I do want to make it clear that the Town Manager's job is to respond to counselors, and at no time have I advocated or endorsed any amendment on this issue at all. So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Further public comment? We're not going to get into a debate about what the Town Manager did or didn't do here. Yes, sir?
I ask permission to speak. My name is Brandon Pollak.
We're not going to get into a debate about what the town manager did or didn't do here. Yes, sir.
Ask permission to speak. My name is Brandon Pollak with Theory Wellness.
And where are you from? What town?
I live in Boston.
Please, people, he's asked the council, the council can make a motion to allow him to speak or not. Is there a motion?
No.
I make a motion.
Second. Recession for ten minutes. People, we can't do this. We have to let people speak. We have somebody on phone trying to listen. Okay? Going to run the meeting the right way. Not going to shout people down. We'll be back in order. Is there a motion to allow this gentleman to speak?
So moved.
By Mr. George, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion, Ms. George?
I believe this is a business owner in Bridgewater, hence the reason I liked, liked allow him to speak.
Mr. Wood?
Same.
Any other discussion from the council present? Mr. Souza, do you have anything to say?
No.
Okay. That's being said, we'll take a roll call vote on allowing him to speak.
George?
Yes.
Dr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Yes, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm not going to take up three minutes. Just, I wasn't prepared to say anything tonight, but just in respect to the, I guess, letter or statement by the attorney, that insinuates that our company would violate some sort of regulation or state law to start selling recreational cannabis without proper permitting and licensing is completely untrue, and I will just tell the council, we will never act in violation of state law. The statements that I heard in respect to this amendment and this ordinance being illegal don't make any sense. I know this law extremely deeply, and my entire business depends on it. So, just, again, to insinuate that we're going to violate state law and regulation because of this ordinance that prohibits retail recreational sales, I don't understand at all where that's coming from. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Next public comment, please. Other public comment? One, it's going twice. All right. Thank you. Moving on. We have no appointments, hearings. The time is now eight oh three P M. We're going to open our hearing on tax classification, F Y eighteen tax classification, and we will ask Ms. McCauley to give us a presentation on it.
Good, whoa, that's loud. Good evening, councilors. My name is Shelley McCauley, the Chief Assessor for the Town of Bridgewater. For the public hearing tonight, on the issue of adopting the tax levy percentages for fiscal year 2018, I will present information and data relevant to making such a determination. The Board of Assessors have determined the assessed valuation of all taxable real and personal property reflecting full and fair cash value as of January first, 2017, as required by Mass General Law. The information was submitted to the D O R and approved November twenty first, 2017. The assessed valuation breakdown is as follows. Class one residential is two billion four hundred and seventy-one million fifty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four. Class three, commercial, two hundred and one million ninety-seven thousand sixteen. Class four industrial is eighty-nine million two hundred and five thousand four hundred and ninety. Class five, personal property, is seventy-nine million six hundred and sixty thousand seven thirty, for a total taxable value of two billion eight hundred and forty-one million twenty-two thousand five sixty. The residential percentage share of the tax levy at full and fair cash value is eighty-six point nine eight. The commercial, industrial, and personal property percentage share of the tax levy at full and fair cash value is thirteen point zero two. Calculating and setting the tax rate is a component of a larger process, what we call the recapitulation process. A municipality's entire budget plan for the fiscal year is laid out on the recap sheet. It lists all appropriations made by the legislative body since the previous year's tax rate was set. Anticipated and actual sources of revenue, other than property taxes such as state aid and estimated local receipts, are also identified. The difference between the appropriations and revenue from these sources must be raised through property taxes. This difference is called the tax levy. The total amount to be raised for fiscal year eighteen is sixty-eight million one hundred and twenty-two thousand nine twenty-eight. Estimated receipts and other sources are twenty-four million nine sixty-seven seven ninety-five. Therefore, the estimated tax levy for fiscal year 2018 is forty-three million one hundred and fifty-five thousand one thirty-three. The levy limit is equal to the prior year's year's levy limit plus amended new growth, the annual two and a half increase, new growth, and any overrides. Fiscal year 2017 levy limit was thirty-eight million eight thirty-four two ninety-three. amended new growth was four thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Two and a half percent this year was nine hundred and seventy thousand nine seventy-five. New growth was seven seventy-eight four thirty-four. Therefore, the total estimated levy limit for fiscal year 2018 is forty million five eighty-eight three ninety-two. Then to calculate the maximum allowable levy, you add the estimated levy limit of forty million five eighty-eight three ninety-two, plus the debt exclusion of two million five eighty-one one ten, which brings the total maximum allowable levy to forty-three million one sixty-nine five oh two. The difference between the maximum allowable levy and the tax levy is the excess levy capacity. The excess levy capacity for fiscal year 2018 is fourteen thousand three sixty-nine and two cents. The town council must decide the percentages of the tax levy each class of real property and personal property will bear each year. To do so, a residential factor is adopted. The residential factor governs the percent of the tax levy to be paid by each class. The adopted factor cannot be less than the minimal residential factor calculated by the D O R. The minimum residential factor this year is ninety-two point five one four one. If a factor of one is adopted, the tax rate would be the same for all classes. The rate is determined by dividing the tax levy by the total value of all taxable property in Bridgewater, and then multiplying that result by a thousand. The estimated 2018 tax levy of forty-three million one fifty-five one thirty-three divided by the value of two billion eight hundred and forty-one million twenty-two thousand five sixty equals point zero one five one nine, multiplied by a thousand, the estimated tax rate is fifteen nineteen. I have included in the handouts different what-if scenarios, which shows the residential factor of one through ninety-two point five one four one, and the prospective share percentages, levy amounts, and estimated tax rates. Please note, the total tax levy remains the same. Shifting the tax burden from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, personal property classes does not increase the amount of money that would be raised through property taxes. Also, the average single-family assessed value for fiscal year eighteen is three sixty-two six eighteen, up from three thirty-eight nine fifty-six in fiscal year two seventeen, which is an increase of six point ninety percent. The average business commercial value for fiscal year eighteen is six fifty-six eight eighty-six, up from six thirty-two six ninety-one in fiscal year two seventeen, which is an increase of three point eight two. And historically, the town of Bridgewater has always maintained a single tax rate.
Thank you. Are the general questions from the public? Any public speaking in favor of this? Any speaking in opposition? Are the questions from the town council? Mr. Wood?
McCauley, yes. Thank you very much. Good presentation. Lot of numbers thrown at us.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure the person who isn't in the midst of budgeting is going to have a difficulty understanding why the residential tax factor of one is so important for Bridgewater, or, more importantly, why it has to be one. So the question to you is, are we almost forced to have a rate of one because our business size is so small? We don't even approach twenty percent business within the town of Bridgewater. Is that right?
Yes, correct. So right now, we're at eighty-six point nine percent residential and thirteen point zero two commercial, industrial, and personal property.
And so it becomes really difficult to shift that burden over to thirteen percent when eighty-six percent is residential.
Correct, and for every one percent, it would be fifteen, fifteen cents.
Right.
As you, I don't know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the assessor? I'd just add, to piggyback on Mr. Wood's point, if we look at F Y seventeen, which Ms. McCauley has provided to us, we see Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, and Halifax all have a single tax rate. Bridgewater's at fifteen sixty-one. East Bridgewater and Halifax are north of eighteen, with higher average property taxes than Bridgewater. But then we look at other towns that have a more developed commercial base, like Middleborough, Rainham, and West Bridgewater. West Bridgewater being the prime example of the biggest difference, where the residential tax rate is seventeen seventy-three, but the commercial tax rate is almost thirty dollars, and they still pay over a hundred dollars more for the average residential tax bill in West Bridgewater than us. Is that correct, Ms. McCauley?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, if I, if I look at it correctly here...
Although that was seventeen tax rate.
That was seventeen, and now we've got eighteen. The tax rate went down from fifteen sixty-one to fifteen nineteen, but the average tax bill went up three hundred dollars. That's because of the rising property values in the town?
I believe it was two hundred and seventeen dollars.
Yeah. I saw the five, and I saw the two. I'm doing air math. So the tax rate went down, but the average tax bill went up because property values are rising.
Correct.
And so, whatever we set tonight, and your recommendation is to make the fact of one, we don't know what values they're going to be till they're assessed and folks get their bills and whatnot.
We know, we know what the value is right now. Is that the question? I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah. So what would the average tax bill be?
Oh, the average tax bill? The average tax bill would be five thousand five hundred and eight, which is an increase of two hundred and seventeen dollars, and the average commercial tax bill will be nine thousand nine seventy-eight, which is an increase of a hundred and two dollars from last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Then we'll close the hearing at eight thirteen, and I will entertain a motion to approve order F Y eighteen zero one zero, classification tax allocation.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood, discussion?
I'll tell you that as the Budget and Finance Committee, we met last week, I think it was, and we voted three to zero to recommend approval of this.
Mr. Haley?
I was there.
Further discussion from the council? Mr. Souza?
No.
Okay. This will require a roll call vote. Ms. Holberg?
Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay. I would also look for a motion to authorize the Chief Assessor, Ms. McCauley, to sign on the town council's behalf, the L A five tax recap.
The moved.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood, discussion?
The recap, I believe, goes up to the state, and it just needs an official sign-off, right?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The recap that will be signed just needs, will go up to the state and just needs an official sign-off.
Correct, I will sign it electronically, and you will sign it in person tonight.
Mr. Haley?
Okay.
Any further discussion from the council? Mr. Souza?
No, sir.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We need, we need a roll call vote. Thank you, Ms. Holberg, for yelling at me. A very nice way.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, I'm going to send this around that we have to sign to actually authorize that. So while we're doing that, we will open a hearing at eight fifteen P M. on license revocation, Skips Liquors. And let me just say that Mass General Law, Chapter One Thirty-eight, Section Sixty-four, states that the licensing authorities, after notice to the licensee, and reasonable opportunity for them to be heard by them, may modify, suspend, revoke, or cancel their license upon satisfactory proof that they have violated or permitted a violation of any condition thereof or any law of the Commonwealth. So, we sent, in pertinent part, to the licensee, that the town council of the town of Bridgewater will hold a hearing on Tuesday, December five, 2017, on whether to revoke the liquor license issued to Patterson's, Inc., D B A Skips Liquors, for the premises located at ninety-eight to one hundred Plymouth Street, Bridgewater, Mass., oh two three two four. The reason for revocation of such license is non-use of the license, although the town council previously approved the transfer of the liquor license for the premises at ninety-eight to one hundred Plymouth Street, Bridgewater, Mass., oh two three two four, to Patterson's, Inc., D B A Skips Liquors. The license has not been used, and Skips Liquors is not presently open for business. The town has made a number of inquiries relative to the scheduled opening, but Skips Liquors remained closed. So we're going to open the license hearing, since their closure is self-evident, as representatives from Skips are here. So if you could just explain your violations and what's going on there.
Good evening. I'm Robert Pellegrini. I'm counsel for the licensee, here with, obviously, my client. Just wanted to quickly go through the timeline, per your request, and sort of explain how we got here. In 2015, Mr. Battell purchased the property and the license for about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For the next eleven months, we permitted the project together. And then, then, very late last year, actually, December, the foundation started to be poured at that time, and by the subcontractor. At that point, we, he realized that that work had been done incorrectly, so he actually stopped work at that time. And then, he was asked by the town, of course, to stop doing it. What happened at that time is the subcontractor didn't put rebar into the concrete. So at that point, work stopped for quite some time, so he could figure out how to correct the matter. And then in the spring, what started to happen with the spring thaw and the rains is that the driveway area began to sort of cave in to the ground that had been left open due to that incident. So about the spring of this year, actually, he had to remove everything that had been done. So at this point, where he's half a year into it, and he's had to pull out everything that's been done. In addition to that, there were two months delay. I'm sure if any of you do this type of work, moving a Verizon pole is equivalent to recreating the Bible. So that took him two months, and I can vouch for that. It's, it's a job. And then, May, June, they repoured the concrete. And then, once that was done, he discovered that his, again, a subcontractor, but this time a different one, had poured the foundation one foot above what was on the approved plans. So he had to go back to his architect, rehire the architect, this time to basically redesign the project. When he went back to the architect at that point, the architect said, you know, time's really good, we're really busy, it's going to be two or three... really good, we're really busy, it's going to be two or three months before we can get to this. He ended up paying the architect a premium to jump right on it. The architect jumped on it, but the architect forgot in her plans to include that one foot, which was the whole purpose for him going back to her. So, when he went back and he said, "You did it wrong again," he was basically told they didn't want to do it, they were going out of business, and he was going to have to find somebody new to start fresh. So, he went to SAE Designs. Now, we're in July and August. SAE jumped right on it, did them from scratch, provided plans, approved by the town at that point. So, now, we're in August, eight months later, started pouring at that point. Everyone's probably noticed since that point, things have gone fairly well comparatively. So, 2000, well, just after August, poured the walls again. On October 16th, he received the letter from the board. Then in November, first and second floors were completed. The trusses are expected to be up for the roof within the next two weeks of the very latest. At this point, mid-February 2018 now, two to three weeks into the month, he's expecting to have everything completed, and then he obviously needs time to get into, get the store ready, but at the very latest and conservatively by mid-March. So, I just want to reiterate that the purchase price for the property and the license is $521,000. He originally anticipated the construction budget to be $375. His actual costs are now just short of half a million. So, small business owner, hasn't done this before. He could have just opened what was there, but we, I think we can all agree that we appreciate the fact that he at least took the initiative to put something really well there. I'll add that the ZBA, you know, after two or three hearings approves the parking, and on the, on the upper floor, there's a one-unit residential, and then the planning board as well, we had to go through as well. We had to do architectural access board at the state and the CONCON. So, there, there was a lot going on, and I just wanted to reiterate that we really do have to keep in mind, this isn't a big business, this wasn't something that he's going to probably ever do again, but we are going from what we had to something really good. We understand that he's supposed to keep you apprised. I really wasn't aware that you were seeking some information, and certainly would have jumped in. As your letter issued in the middle of October, you know, I did want to state that the ABCC generally starts the clock ticking from there and counts six months out from there, as they do appreciate that, that these are, are rights that need to be protected. And in this case in particular, here's somebody that has come in and spent just shy of a million dollars trying to put this together. So, I'd ask for the council's consideration with respect to that. If you have any questions for Mr. Patel, I just wanted to bring him up here with me. I will add that he does have two other locations. One's been open for 17 years with no violations, the other one, half a dozen years, also with no violations.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the council for the petitioner, Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I represent the district that the store is in. Your timeline misses about three and a half years. You skipped the whole part about the multiple years that the store was closed. You skipped the part that we were told that the upper space would be office space, not apartment space. It's good to see, you know, walls finally going up, but this, probably on this date a year ago, we were talking about not renewing the license because there was no progress being made. And you skipped the part where, I think we had all agreed, there are some new counselors here, to get a periodic update on the, on the procedures. And we haven't heard from your client in 18 months, I think. So, you know, there's a lot of missed information there. And I don't understand the business model where you accept a license, you have a standing building, and even if you're going to replace the building, that you just don't open the door and use your license, and you have multiple years' absence, and, and you leave a crater in the ground for six months, I think it was? Even with all the issues with the permitting going on. It was, it was a safety factor for a long time. It filled with water, and the fencing was removed. It, it became a hazard in the middle of a very busy area. And so, I'm reluctant to say that there's a few more months available, because I have no history of confidence here that it will actually get done. So, can you maybe address some concerns?
I think I might turn it over to my client, but I do want to say, for the upper floor to be commercial, I'm sure you know that there are ABCC requirements that would require an elevator to be placed in there. And with most of the work that I've been doing and most of the development that's being done, unless it's a large building with several commercial tenants, it's really not economically feasible to do that. I can't speak to what had been done in years before he owned the property, so I can't really talk about, or am I at all knowledgeable about the store being closed previously? I can only address since he's owned it and how I've been involved. So, I guess I, I'll just turn it over to Yogi to ask him to elaborate perhaps on the inquiries you've received and you haven't responded to the board.
As, as for the board's requests or the, every email, I have pretty much presented to every single meeting except the one, and I was out of the town at that time, but I did tell this listener that I would attend the second one, and she did put me in the second meeting, and I actually have came to every single meeting. I have not missed any meetings.
Other questions from the council? Mr. Columbotus?
Mr. Patel, when did, so when did you buy the property?
We bought it, property in January of 2000, no, December of 2015.
George?
So, do we have a projected date of completion?
Yes, it should be done by end of the February, and I probably need max 15 to 20 days to put the fixtures, furnitures, and restock it and to open it.
So, for, just for clarity, we would expect to see that up and running by the beginning of March of 2018?
Not probably by beginning of the March, but definitely by end of the March, we will be open. We are targeting for the March 1st, but it is construction still in the place, so I'm
Bless you, Frank.
Keeping that 10, 15 days of window open, but definitely by March 1st, I would like to see that business going.
Okay, so, again, for, for clarity, for the record, we're not going to be sitting here at the end of March getting an update that you haven't opened?
No, sir.
It's, what's in your direct control?
Correct.
Other questions?
I'd like some clarification on the, on the license itself, because 2015 seems too recent, because I, I think Bill Rivers was still on the council when this first came up. And that was at least three years ago, which made of, would have made it older than 2015.
Let me clarify on that.
Please.
When we applied to ABCC for transfer, ABCC took pretty much one year to transfer this application, and we got it approval in 2015.
So, can you clarify that again? So, did you actually make purchase or, or offer to purchase the, the business prior to the date you just said, 2015? And then, you're saying ABCC took until 2015 to prove, to approve it?
So, first, when we started with the previous owner, I only was planning to buy a business and open the store in the exist location. Then he turned around, and when it comes closer to the fall of 2015, he said, "Would you like to interest in buying the property?" And he was willing to finance a little bit money at that time for one or two year. I decided to go forward, but at that time, because the last winter was very extremely heavy winter, the building was damaged big time. At that point, I decided to just demolish the building and put the brand-new building over there, because it was pretty much over $100,000 in expense to renovate or just put the old building back in place. So, in December 2015, we bought, and right away, we started working with Mr. Pellegrini.
Other questions from the council? Mr. Gallagher?
I just have, just have one question. First of all, I, I appreciate you coming in tonight and giving us an update, because that's what I think this should be. I do not think this should be, this should be a revocation hearing, but I appreciate the update. And I just want to ask you a question regarding the, the, the building itself and the opening. I think, just to say it again, you do expect to be open for business by the end of March?
Yes, sir.
And the second floor, I mean, how many, are there going to be rental units on, on a second floor, and how many will, will there be? And are they targeted to open before or after or at the same time?
I can speak to that, just because I did all the permitting for it. It's just a three-bedroom, one-unit apartment.
Okay.
Just to add, I was speaking to building inspector a couple of days ago, and my whole target was to open the store first, and, you know, if the contractor has to work, continue on the apartments upstairs, he can continue on. But building inspector told us that it will be only one occupancy permit at once. So, that makes my life even harder now, pushing to contractors, and never dealt with contractors in my life, and I will never again. Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
I'll just say, knowing, sorry, knowing, it's nearly my front yard that I see progress finally, so it's very, now that there was progress, it was pretty rapid, I'll say that. And it's been a couple of cold and raw days, I've seen gentlemen out there working, doing the framing and getting it, progress going. So, I would give it some, some weight that I can see this continuing to, to march and have some faith, and maybe some good luck coming your way.
Yes.
Anything else from the council? Mr. Souza, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Then I'd ask you guys if you'd like to make the closing statement at all?
I think I've said more than enough. You have a long night ahead of you.
Okay. All right, we'll close the hearing at 8:33 PM. Now, we'll move on to the portion where we can find that the licensee violated or permitted a violation of the license or of Massachusetts law, or find no violation has occurred. Is there a motion? I need either to find the head of violation...
I'll make a motion that no violation has occurred.
I'll second that.
Dr. Perry makes a motion that no violation has occurred, and Mr. Gallagher makes a second to that. Mr. Perry, would you like to discuss?
I would just, would say, obviously, I think he's, he's definitely run into some difficulties through his whole process, and for someone who's got almost over a million dollars dumped into this property, for him to lose his license and his ability to recoup his investment would be very, very tough. So, I would, I would definitely like to see him follow through and finish his project, and hopefully get his business up and running by the end of March.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too agree with Counselor Perry. I mean, I was here in, in April of 2015, got elected, and about a month or two later, we, the process started of calling you in, asking you, you know, where are you with your project, where are you with opening the store, and blah, and so on and so forth. And I think you've come to, all the meetings we've asked you to, to come to, probably four or five, but we've never asked, we've never done this, we've never called you in for a license revocation, when we could have three or four times before. And, and now that we see the building go up, and you're actually making progress, now we have you in because we may want to take away your license. That's just not right. I think you're making progress. I, I think, I can certainly wait till the end of March. I mean, the citizens of Bridgewater certainly have not had their opportunities to buy, have not missed any opportunities here to buy alcohol, it's, it's available. So, I, I think I want to give you some more time. I have no interest in revocating your license. Thank you.
Other discussion, Mr. Wood?
Thank you. So, I think we're probably on the, on the same page with this. Hopefully, you get this done in the spring, because I've heard this story multiple times, right? I've heard multiple versions of the stories. I'm sorry, that's just the way it is. The town manager and I have a discussion over your store at least once a month, sometimes twice a month. The reason this became on the agenda is, I believe the standard set a couple of years ago was that we would get an update, like at the second meeting of every month. And that wasn't happening. I was being told that emails and phone calls were not being returned, and that updates were not being made. Now, maybe some committee movement was happening on the planning board and the thing, but as a business owner, especially one that's taking so long, you have to be more communicative. Thank you.
Communicative.
Thank you. With the town, because I've been talking about this for a long time. I, I'm not going to reach out to you and, and find out if you had a problem with, you know, the gas line, or an electric pole, or a contract, or, or too high a foundation, or too low a foundation, or whatnot, right? And it's a, you know, when we talk about ISOs around the town, that has been one for a long time. So, hopefully, you get it straightened out, hopefully, you get it open, and hopefully, you're successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, Mr. George?
So, I appreciate it. The only thing I would ask is, with any project, for anybody who's dealt with projects, now I haven't dealt with a project your size, if you know early on next year that there's going to be delays, instead of us pulling you in here, because it's going longer than what we talked about, I would hope that you would come in and give us an update and let us know what's going on. I think we're a very accommodating council, and to Counselor Wood's point, we don't want to be guessing what's going on, we'd rather hear it directly from you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion from the council on the motion to find no violation, Mr. Columbotus?
My only hesitation in not revoking the license is, that we perhaps send a message to property owners that they can take their time and leave a hole in the ground. Wow. So, but it would be a pretty harsh punishment to revoke the license at this point, to teach others a lesson than to, to provide a disincentive to behave that way. I think Mr. Patel has every incentive in the world to get it done, so I don't see any point.
If I, if I may, anyone else have comments? We do have an opportunity to find a violation has occurred, and if we do, we can take no action. We can issue a warning, we can modify the license, suspend the license, revoke the license, or cancel the license. So, with, with that in mind, Mr. Perry, you made the motion, Mr. Gallagher, you seconded it. Are you still committed to finding no violation has occurred? Mr. Perry?
I'll speak to it first. At this point, no, I mean, I would rather not leave a black mark on his record here in regards to this, if there's an issue down the line in his functioning as a liquor store, that, you know, creates more of a situation. I think I'd rather wait till that situation would occur before I would take that type of action on the license.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
I, I agree.
Okay. And a question for the town manager. We sent this letter around license revocation in the middle of October, and now we've got a hearing in essentially the beginning of December, so six weeks or more. I think I heard pretty clearly from the council here that we need something up and running by the end of March, or none of us are going to be happy. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what I heard. When do we have to send the next letter, so that if something doesn't happen at the end of March, we can act quickly rather than not so quickly?
I think anytime you notice on a license revocation hearing, I believe it's
it's the thirty-day period that you have to give the, uh, the license holder. Uh, so it would be at least a thirty-day in advance of, of a meeting or a hearing date.
So, it would behoove you, sir, to, um, keep the town manager and therefore us up to date on all your progress. And, um, if you're not going to hit the end of March and you, and, or even if you have the faintest idea you might not hit the end of March by the middle of February, let the town manager know. Or let the town manager know you're gonna hit it. Either way, because I think the sense of this council would be that we would be at our first meeting in February unless we know it's going to open, be, be right back in the same place at the end of March. And I don't want to be here. I'm sure you guys don't want to be here. Um, so let's keep the lines of communication open is my strong suggestion. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Uh, so there's been a motion and a second to find no violation has occurred, and I will turn it over to the council clerk to call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. Moving on to item G, license transaction. Uh, petition P two zero one seven zero three one, whereas Joseph A. Brazil, DBA Rocking Horse Crafts, operating at five twenty-nine Plymouth Street, desires its license to continue operations, and he's complied with all the policies and requirements of the town as well as applicable state laws. And whereas we are the acting legislative body of the town and have such licensing authority, and with the approval of the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, police and fire departments, uh, who have oversight authority, it appears the public good requires such a license to be granted. Is there a motion to renew the license?
Motion to renew.
Made by Mr. Wood?
Second.
Second by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood, discussion?
Um, I've known Mr. Brazil for many years, and he's operated this business for many years. Very small business, and I hope everybody agrees to approve.
Mr. Haley?
No, no comment.
Other comments? Hearing none. Uh, Ms. Holmberg, if you could call the roll.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to petition P two zero one seven zero three two, annual license renewals, auto dealers, licensing of class one, two, and three auto dealers, uh, class one, a total of two, class two, a total of twelve, and class three, a total of seven. Um, we'll probably need to correct that Scrivener's error of twenty-three versus twenty-one, but other than that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. George?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wood. Mr. George, discussion?
None.
Mr. Wood?
Uh, I have a question on page two to the town manager. Um, item number eleven, I think in our packet was highlighted yellow. It's, it's a faint gray here. Is there a reason for that?
Uh, no, that's for us internally. That's a license that we will hold until the applicant has resolved an outstanding tax bill.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, annual license renewals, petition P two zero one seven zero three three, licensing of secondhand gold slash pawn shops. Now, when you hear this, you'd be interested in knowing that not all of them are necessarily pawn shops. That's just how the law defines them. GameStop, Inc., DBA GameStop three seven seven six, uh, at two thirty-three Broad Street, Platinum Scrap and Recycling, eighteen seventy-five Broad Street, Unit Three, A and D Acquisitions LLC, DBA Mayflower Gold and Silver, Seven Main Street, Chateau Enterprises, fifty-one Broad Street. Is there a motion to approve these licenses?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mrs. Loesch, seconded by Mr. George. Mrs. Loesch, discussion?
No.
Mr. George?
Nope.
Further discussion? Mr. Colum Bodas?
Um, I noticed that one of the whereas is, is whereas said applicants have complied with the policies and requirements of the town of Bridgewater as well as applicable state laws governing its industry. Um, I know for instance that one of these establishments often puts out a temporary sign, which is in violation of our sign-bylaws. So, just wanted to bring that up. That's something we should perhaps look at.
Thank you, Mr. Colum Bodas. I think, uh, one of the, I'd, I'd just point out that another thing that they do have to comply with is, uh, requiring ID for sale and holding it and so on and so forth. So, um, we appreciate them complying with that local ordinance. Further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to petition P two zero one seven zero three four, annual license renewal taxis. Uh, Bill's Taxi Service, Inc., operating at one oh oh one Bedford Street, desires its license to continue, and it has complied with all of the, uh, requirements it needs to. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Made by Mr. Gallagher?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Gallagher, discussion?
No discussion.
Mrs. Loesch?
None.
Other discussion?
No.
Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, petition P two zero one seven zero three five, annual license renewals, auto amusements. Uh, these are in establishments without alcohol. Papagino's, Inc., at two thirty-three Broad Street, with a total of two auto amusements, and Bridgewater Sports Complex, Inc., at three fifty Bedford Street, with a total of seven. Um, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, second by Mr. George. Mr. Gallagher, discussion?
No discussion.
Mr. George?
None.
Anything else from the council? Mr. Souza?
No, sir.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to petition P two zero one seven zero three six, annual license renewals, lodging houses. This would be to Tianming Lin and Zhao Hua Zeng at forty Central Square, Brian Kaplovsky at one oh five Plymouth Street, and nine Borough Ave, Albert Dutra Jr. at eighty-four South Street, Pak Lodges LLC at nineteen twelve South Street, Iron Fence Trust LLC, DBA Iron Fence Inn at forty-six Main Street, and Gail Yell at twenty-eight School Street. Uh, all of the paperwork is in order. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Haley?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perry. Uh, Mr. Haley, discussion?
Uh, none.
Mr. Perry?
Uh, just a quick question through you to the town manager. Have we known of any issues with these lodging houses in the past year? I know in the past we've had some issues.
Uh, no, sir. Nothing in the past year.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, uh, the clerk will call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to petition P two zero one seven zero three seven, uh, the renewal of annual entertainment licenses to, uh, BB Bridgewater LLC, DBA Better Bean Coffee, at twenty-three Central Square, Town of Bridgewater Music Alley at sixty-four Central Square, and the Bridge Center at four seventy Heinz Street. Uh, we have two nonprofits in there that have requested a waiver of the annual fee, and everyone has complied with all of their paperwork. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Perry. Mr. George, discussion?
Nope.
Mr. Perry?
Nothing further.
Any other thing, anything else from the council? Mr. Souza?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to presentations, capital plan from the town manager and the finance director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, in front of you is, uh, are, uh, I believe, four sheets of paper, five sheets of paper, um, which represents sort of the culled-down, um, version of our capital list, our capital plan, which, uh, which is stretched out over the next, uh, six or seven or eight years or so. Um, this is, uh, an internal, obviously an internal version, what we've done. Um, and it represents, um, the, the critical needs that we see them, uh, moving forward. So, with that, maybe I would give you, I, my intent tonight is to at least give you this, uh, show you sort of the fruits of, of some of our, uh, work internally. Um, there's a lot of information and data behind these numbers, more so than you'd care to look at, but I want to give, uh, Tony Solomati, our finance director, an opportunity just to give you an idea of how this list was developed, the kind of data, uh, the kind of interaction we've had with, uh, our department heads, um, the kind of data that, that we've developed, um, to put this together, and, and then how we will, uh, proceed forward on, uh, on the overall, uh, capital plan. I will, uh, remind the council that we have, uh, we have not had a full, robust capital plan in quite a number of years. Um, so a lot of this represents, um, some pent-up, um, pent-up needs, um, which, uh, which we will have to contend with. But I think moving forward, our intent is to have a discussion with Budget and Finance Committee, and also have a discussion, uh, with Finance Committee on, on the best ways, uh, that they would recommend to, to finance, um, much of what is on the list. But that said, um, I'll ask Tony just to give you, uh, an idea of how this was developed, um, and really what's, what's behind some of those numbers.
Thank you, uh, Michael. Um, so when the process began, uh, the town manager issued a request to all department heads to provide a detailed description, and we actually have a document which they had to complete for any particular capital item. Uh, they had to identify, uh, the priority it was for them. Uh, they had to give a description as to what this project was, justification for the project, uh, and operational impact that it would have, and certainly their priority and what year they would have liked to see this funded. Um, the guidelines were around, you know, what's necessary in order to maintain your service levels, you know? Uh, what aging equipment vehicles, uh, equipment or, uh, infrastructure that needs to be brought up to date. Um, to take into consideration the fact that any capital asset that the town embarks or is, is, um, intends on making a purchase of, that there's adequate funds within an operating budget to maintain that capital expenditure. And, uh, and lastly, whatever capital expenditures are, are made, that those assets are fully utilized. So, um, that was, uh, some guidelines that was given, guidelines that were given to the department heads. And, uh, with that, they submitted a, a request form, as I described, and a sum, which gave a summary as well of all the items that they, that they had. Um, and the process was that we compiled this information and we sat down with the individual department zone to, uh, cull out some more details to make sure the, um, specifically the justification, uh, and the operational impact, and a clear description was, was, uh, outlined. We wanted the documents to be able to be used by the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and we want them to be able to use by the Finance Committee in discussing the merits of each particular request. So, it, what we see as our next step is, again, this is high level. This is the entire list that we see. You can see that the, you know, total bottom line request is, um, for just the general fund, because you have two sets of documents, one for the enterprise, which is water and sewer, and then you have a document that's just for the general fund. You know, the general fund request, and there's some large capital items is around, you know, eighty-eight, eighty-eight million, eighty-nine million dollars. So, there's a, there's a backlog of, as Michael, I think, best put it, of, of items that need to at least be discussed. Um, and so, that's where we leave it because we believe that the, the big, the, the big part of the discussion will be, so how do you fund these types of capital items? You know, historically, you've funded capital, uh, uh, building improvements or new buildings, you do a debt exclusion. Uh, you've fund, uh, some of the smaller, uh, capital expenditures through your capital stabilization fund or free cash. Um, and then there's been other areas. Chapter ninety is a funding source for a lot. So, uh, you know, with this type of list, um, there's going to have to be a consideration as to how you can fund this within the context of, and, and we started talking about this in the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, of a five-year forecast, which we will begin to re- review with the Budget Finance Subcommittee and the Finance Committee, so we can see what affordability there is within, uh, the constraints of two and a half in your current revenue streams, because that's going to be an important element for determining how you can fund some, uh, of these capital items. So, um, that's where we're at, and, uh, appreciate your, uh, listening.
Thank you, Mr. Solomati. Um, if I might go first, and then I'll open it up to the council. You mentioned an eighty-eight million dollar number, which is very, very huge, uh, and I see sixty million in here for the Mitchell School.
Correct.
Um, that hasn't been determined at all yet by the Mitchell School Building Committee as far as what we're doing or how much, uh, it's going to cost, or how much state reimbursement of that amount will be.
Correct.
So, can we just take that off the board saying, you know, all right, we know there's going to be something for the Mitchell School coming down the line, um, but let's talk about it within a twenty-eight million dollar project list and not a eighty-eight million dollar project list so that people don't get scared?
Yeah, I, I think the intent was that we know that whatever that number ends up being, it, it's going to be funded through some, uh, traditional mechanism. Um, and, and yes, there is another large ticket item as well. So, you could, you could knock off, you know, uh, seventy million because there's obviously, what's been discussed in the past is a, a new fire station, where that is in the process. We wanted to have this as to be a full container of what might come before the town, knowing that this, this is that, just that, the, the collection of, of everything that, that might be going on. But yes, to your point, yes.
I mean, if, if we're getting north of fifty percent reimbursement, we're not going to be paying a hundred thirty million dollars for a school at the Mitchell way. I know that.
Understood.
Thank you. All right. Uh, other comments, questions from the council? Mr. Colum Bodas?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Solomati, for this. Um, so I just want to be clear. This is just sort of unfiltered, throw it all in, is sort of what each department and you and town manager have come to. And so, it's completely unedited, unfiltered, really. You didn't, you haven't winnowed anything out. Yeah.
Well, if I could, I, I would say, um,
Well, if I could, I would say yes and no. We have, we have winnowed down, we've taken out things that we feel just aren't realistic for Bridgewater, you know, things that, as Tony mentioned, things that don't, you know, don't help us operationally, things that would be a one-time purchase that could very well sit, you know, unused, you know, we've winnowed out a lot of that. But, but that said, this is the full, complete list of everything we think, you know, we do need, but, but obviously, we know that we're not going to get all of this.
Right, so you did the first cut, essentially?
Right.
Right. And I'm looking at the highway segment of this, and wondering, I see that there's budgeted, line 23C, over a million dollars for, for complete streets, for the Central Square parallel parking. And I'm wondering if that includes other reconfigurations of the Central Square traffic flow, or is it just the parking? Because I know our revitalization plan and our complete streets plan dictated other changes to it.
We put in, essentially, what was in the complete streets recommendation is what we plugged in here as essentially a placeholder, so that we knew, we could see laddered out, you know, if we did exactly what that complete streets plan said, that's roughly what it would cost.
But it captures everything that was in the, okay.
Yeah, yep.
Thanks.
But to your point, that, yeah, that, it doesn't mean that all we're doing is doing parallel parking, there's more to that number than that, that's just how they labeled it in the complete streets program.
It could have been labeled as Central Square Reconfiguration.
Yeah.
Correctly with the complete streets.
Thank you.
Perry?
Thank you. Obviously, we see quite a bit of line items for 2018, which comes out to over ten million dollars. What is our process of picking and choosing this, you know, and how are we prioritizing, how are we coming up with what we feel is the most important, and, you know, what is our overall process with this, so we see things going forward?
That's a great question. I think we will present this in probably a little bit more detailed fashion to the Finance Committee and also the Budget and Finance Committee. We've told the Finance Committee for probably three or four years now that what our objective is, is to get them thinking on a more long-term basis, let them recommend, you know, policy to council, you know, having them approve a gift of three hundred and fifty dollars to the town really doesn't use their time or expertise particularly wisely. So, so our effort here is to really engage the Finance Committee in a, in a pretty robust discussion about a number of things, how we prioritize, what we prioritize, and then how we fund. And I think, I suspect that those two conversations will go on somewhat simultaneously.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussions, one second, Mr. Columbotus, anything else before we go back to Mr. Columbotus?
Thank you. So I noticed you broke out, like you said, you broke out the enterprise accounts, where the funding will come from, these and such. And I'm wondering, I guess, in particular, in the ambulance, are there any, any of these elements, any of these expenditures could be, have funding mechanisms kind of tied to them, like ambulance receipts, or?
Well, we wanted to put it forth without getting into the discussion of the funding sources. We, Michael and I, have our own thoughts on that, and there's, there are a number of different funding sources. One is exactly ambulance receipts, where we put lease payments in here that we've already committed to, and they are funded through the ambulance receipts. So, yeah, we have our thought process as it, but we wanted to be as, as open and collaborative as, as we can, and we certainly will make our recommendations where we think funding should come from.
Right. And also, I guess, you know, in terms of the Elm Street work is over, well, I guess it's almost about over three million dollars. I know we've talked about a TIF, which is a tax increment financing, where anticipated tax revenues pay for capital work, is that something that we're still considering?
That's, that's still in the works, obviously. I think the council knows that we're also waiting to hear about a Massworks grant, which could fund us up to a three million dollar amount. So I think, I think your question and Tony's answer, I think, are worth repeating. You know, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we could have, and this will grow, and, you know, and get enlarged and shrink and so forth, but we wanted to make sure that we could get really the whole picture. Traditionally, you know, we never put down, you know, the roads that are getting repaid, because that was sort of separate, and that was the only funding source we have, or have and have had, is Chapter 90. So Chapter 90 funds to the tune of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, goes towards road reconstruction, so we never put those on a plan. But as we get a little more sophisticated, and as we, you know, account and track roadways in particular, a little more carefully, and their expected life, lifetime, it does make sense to start to plug more and more stuff in here, not to make it a burdensome list, but so that people can actually see where their money goes.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Souza, do you have any comments, questions?
No, sir.
Okay, George?
Just one quick question, forgive me for the new guy. Where does the golf course fall on this?
We're not going to let the golf course buy anything.
Okay. We've got that on the record, right? Oh, no? Okay.
That's a good question, that's, that's our one, that's our one sort of outlier. We have golf course and also the transfer station. Transfer station does need some, some upgrades in, at that, at that facility, and the golf course has traditionally funded, up until now, is mostly funded its, its capital plan through its operational budget. And as we, as we transition away from debt payments this year, well, next year, and as they pay back whatever has been borrowed essentially from town reserves, then, then they will have their own capital list that will be, you know, included as, as part of this.
Okay. Idea of when would see that?
Well, I would, well, let me just add to first what Michael said. Items that we really need to make sure they have funded is the lease purchase for some of their equipment. So they have a number of pieces of equipment that lease is going to be up, and we're looking for them to be able to fund within their operating budget, picking up on those leases. And speaking with Mr. Simmons today, it was, then we can begin to talk about the actual work that might need to be done for, for the golf course, but we know they're going to have, there'll be a repay of one hundred and seventy-five for last year, and two hundred for this year.
Okay.
So we want to see how that all shakes out. So to answer your question in short, I would say, you know, a year from now, we'll really be talking about a, a capital plan for them.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the capital plan? Mr. Souza, one more chance?
No, no questions.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Solomonti, thank you, Mr. Dutton. We'll move on to town manager's report. Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Few items tonight, just an update on the, we've got three current 40B applications in the works, two of them are in hearing with the ZBA, one being Duxborough, which has been in hearing for a number of months now, but is coming towards the close of that hearing, so I understand. And also Viva, which is Claremont Corporation's application for three hundred additional apartments on its property behind its office building out on Pleasant Street near the, the Rainham Line. That is also opened up hearing with the ZBA. And just as an aside, I think the council knows, but for public consumption, Claremont was approved for another slightly smaller office building, which would also go behind its current, current offices, so they are, they are anxious to break ground on that relatively quickly. And the third, we did receive site eligibility letter from Mass Housing for Borough Place Apartments located on the corner, basically, almost on the corner of Borough and Plymouth, I think it's the A1 roofing site. They granted site eligibility for up to sixty rental units on that property, which is roughly two acres, and we have not seen the 40B application, the ZBA has not received that 40B application as of yet, but once we do, we'll, once we get it, we'll be able to analyze it, and that'll start ZBA hearing as well. So now that they're all gone, I just wanted to give my kudos to Mr. Solomonti and the, and the rest of the finance team. They've done a really great job bringing us really into the 21st century in terms of our finances, certainly with the historical data and the, and the data that we need to move forward and make good decisions with. So I really give them my, my kudos, and I hope the council would join me in that. Speaking of finance team, we welcome Scott Boyce, who's our new collector treasurer, hit the ground running. As the council knows, he most recently worked at the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, where he basically ran its financial operations, and he also had served for a number of years in Weymouth with our interim collector treasurer, Angela Chandler. And certainly, I want to use the opportunity to thank Angela for the work that she put in. She was here longer than she expected, but she had a lot more fun than she, than she expected, so hopefully, it all worked out, and she will continue with us in a contract capacity to implement some pieces of the MUNUS system, so, so she's not going away anytime soon. Just a, a little bit of a heads up to residents and, and the council and folks listening, the roadways department has been spending a lot of time, they spend a good chunk of their summer preparing equipment and securing supplies for snow and ice operations, and Superintendent Ledoux has warned me that, that there is a possibility, they do their utmost every day, but there is a possibility that some of the salting and sanding routes will be affected by, one, a difficulty in trying to find employees to, or part-time employees or, or snow and ice employees to come in and operate equipment, and also some equipment issues will affect, possibly affect some of the sanding, the amount of time it takes to get roads and subdivisions sanded and, and salted. So just, just a little bit of a heads up. This is not a particular issue to us, everybody is having a very difficult time trying to find people to work. I can tell you the average age of our, our snow and ice part-time employees, probably, well, definitely north of sixty, probably closer to seventy. So, you know, you've got people with a lot of experience, but, but they're tired, though. The water, actually, the sewer department started work on their ten-year permit, and that started with an affordability analysis, and that is ongoing. Water Department is moving ahead with two of its major projects, the water meter replacement project, which I think you know very well, and the, the other is the High Street Water Treatment Plant, which is about halfway through the planning process. That treatment plant will solve a lot of our issues with discolored water in that, that side of town, so that, that certainly can't come anytime too soon, so. To that end, the water department is flushing the pipes, which they do twice a year. They do post weekly notifications on the town's website under Newsflash, people, if they, and they also post little signs around the neighborhoods when, when flushing is taking place. Flushing will cause discoloration, that's nothing that is abnormal, but, but people should be aware that, that sometimes that flushing will disturb the sediments in the pipes and cause some discoloration. The town clerk reports that the annual census is going out sometime after December 11th, and folks should return that census back to the town clerk's office as soon as possible. The census, for those that don't know, helps, definitely helps us with federal and state funding, grant opportunities and so forth, so it's important for folks, if you want to keep your, your taxes as low as possible and get the best bang for your buck, then please return your census filled out and, and ready to go. And again, as with last year, dog license renewals are included as part of the census, it's a tear-off at the bottom of the, of the sheet, and so if you have a dog, please, please get it licensed, because there are substantial penalties for not getting it licensed. This is a very easy way to license your, your dog, so I encourage folks to do that. Just a little update on our Green Communities Grants. Carlton Hunt, our Green Communities, I don't know what you call him, incredible volunteer, has done the numbers and let us know, we've seen a nineteen percent decrease in building energy use since twenty, two thousand and nine, which is great for us. We've also seen street and traffic light use decreased by about seven percent, so that's also great news for us. To that end, we are looking at a, at a program, state and national grid program, to convert our streetlights to LED lamps. We are having that discussion, whether we move forward or not, we're not quite sure yet, but, but it does appear to be a great program, it requires some upfront expense, but obviously would offer some long-term energy savings on the back end, so we're, we're doing that analysis now. Just to keep the council apprised, the planning board denied the special permit and site plan for the proposed solar farm on, off of Auburn Street. The Conservation Commission hearing is going forward, I believe, next week on, on that, so although it was denied by the planning board, they, they are continuing the Conservation Commission hearing, so we will, we will see where that ends up. Finally, I did ask Mass Housing to give us some advice on the one submission that we received for the McKellwain School. Talked to them a couple of times, they have, they have committed to doing that, and so we'll be working with them more to get, get their recommendations and, and their professional advice on that one. And that, that's what I have this evening.
Questions for the town manager, Mr. Wood?
I have a question about that solar farm. What was the reason given by the planning board for rejecting it?
Planning board felt that, very basically, the planning board felt that they couldn't meet site plan requirements for screening was one of the big ones, I believe.
Collecting too much sunshine, maybe. Second question, if I may. We've talked for years now about Plymouth Street, public safety, having skips lickers here is an area of where it's very dark, there's a lot of pedestrians now crossing the street. I'm told that, we know the nail factory's coming down, I'm hearing rumors it's going to be a parking lot, which means more pedestrians cross in the street. Somebody painted the crosswalk down by Waterford Village, but there's very little lighting there, and there's not enough lighting at the, at the railroad tracks where a lot of students cross. What can we do to get more lighting on that stretch of road?
I have, I, probably two years ago, I put in a request, we got, did get some additional lighting, but I think, to your point, there are intersections, the intersections in particular and the crosswalks need a significant amount of additional lighting, so I'll, I'll reach out to BSU, and maybe jointly, we can, we can ask National Grid to increase the wattage and add lamps.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you. A couple of quick questions. As you mentioned earlier, dog licenses, did you, do you know the approximate compliance for this year so far on dog licenses?
The rate of compliance?
Yes, how many licenses is in versus not in?
I, I couldn't quote you, but I can certainly find out.
And then secondarily, just depending on what percentage is, is not been collected, what is our procedure right now for, for trying to collect that?
We have, I know that the town clerk's office has tried a number of different ways to collect, we've done, taped a public service announcement, which I haven't seen, but I hear it's a little more lighthearted than, than, you know, your normal, typical PSA, which is good, but just building some awareness, number one. Number two, pointing out the penalties to people, if their, if their pets or dogs get, have to get picked up for some reason and they're not licensed, there's a very significant fine associated with that, I think it's two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty dollars. So there, there's every incentive to get the dog licensed. We have, fortunately, knock on wood, we haven't had very many dog, dangerous dog hearings lately, but invariably, when, when we did, we were dealing with dogs that I'd say probably fifty percent of the time were not licensed, so if that's an indication of the compliance rate, probably not a great indication, but
Right.
There is a non-compliance, a significant non-compliance rate.
And second question, as you mentioned, we're asking Mass Housing- And second question. As you mentioned, we're asking Mass Housing to help us take a look at the McKelwain project. Did they give you a timeline on how quickly they could look at this? Because I know that is a sensitive situation.
They committed to doing a very quick turnaround for us. One of the things we are trying to set up right now is sort of a community meeting with the proposers to really flesh out exactly what, you know, what their, what their plan is, so people can see it, they can see it on the screen, really understand the details. But we intend to get both Mass Housing advice and then other independent sort of peer review advice from other affordable housing experts.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions. Mr. Haley.
On the census, is this paper only? Is there a web access opportunity?
I believe it's paper only, but I can find out.
Postage paid?
Actually, return postage is not paid, but you can certainly drop it off. We're happy to take it.
I'll give you a stamp.
More participation helps us out, just would have been nice. Thank you.
Gallagher.
Just two quick questions, and I want to get a little more feedback on what Mr. Wood brought up about the lights. Because I do know, driving through town, that, and a couple of people have mentioned to me, that the lights look dull. So I don't know if the wattage has already been rolled back a little bit, or is it, has it been? And is that normal? I mean, are we really trying to save a little money, which is fine, but I just noticed even areas that there are lights that it seems dark.
No, we haven't, in fact, if anything, we've asked them to increase wattage. As I say, we did that about two years ago, and they added more lights, but haven't addressed wattage. I know that there are two sets of lights in Central Square. There are the, I'll call them National Grid, regular streetlights, and then there are the decorative lamps. The decorative lamps, there's some electrical issue associated with the decorative lamps, and it's two issues. There's some issue, some fault somewhere, but then also a timing issue. So that may be the reason for some dimness, I guess.
And the other question I have is, I noticed in the budget that was distributed this afternoon, current budget that we're operating under, that the, there have been several payments under professional and technical services that weren't budgeted for. Can you explain that?
I'm not sure where they were, but my guess is they, they may have been the collector treasurer's.
Town manager's budget, conservation, inspectional services did not have any, anything budgeted for professional and technical services, but they have all been over, they've all, you paid something out of that line item. I just didn't know what, if you bought some sort of software or something.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't make that kind of purchase. The only thing, I mean, I can go look, but usually when we expend out of a professional and technical, it's for contract help when we don't have an employee. If an employee leaves, then we'll, you know, expend. If we need the contract help, we'll expend out a professional and technical, and then, and then come back and make adjustments, you know, in the year. But I will, I'll look at that.
Other questions. Mr. George.
Thank you. So, Mr. Dutton, I see, oops, sorry. Thank you. I see in your notes that you had a meeting with BSU regarding the Old Town Hall. Can you give us an update on that?
Yes, I can, actually. BSU has shown some interest over the years in the use of the Old Town Hall, and they've asked me, you know, if it's not being, if it's not going to be used for something else, you know, could we do something with it? So I've given them, I think, two or three tours of the building, just given them some idea of the condition it's in, and they've looked at it. They are interested in doing something. I can tell you that we have, we have a RFP ready to go pending some of tonight's discussion, and that will be advertised and released December 12th, I believe.
Okay, so there's some things to discuss on the RFP?
I think if the council, if the council chooses to, I think there was, Councilor Colm Bodas had a.
We have a discussion, progress on Town Hall, emptying, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's what the town manager is referring to.
Okay.
Well, you also have a transform Town Hall into an arts and commerce center that I believe is, is ready for action tonight if the council chooses. So as I say, the draft is ready and pending, pending the discussion on that.
Right. Thank you.
Colm Bodas?
Nothing.
Mr. Souza?
Nothing.
I don't think you asked anything yet.
No?
All set?
All right. Thank you. Moving on to discussions. Progress on Town Hall, emptying the building and placing on the National Register of Historic Buildings. Mr. Colm Bodas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, so where are we at? We approved an order several months ago to put the Town Hall on the National Register. And as we see with the McKelwain response to the RFP, placement on the register is really critical to getting historic tax credit. So it kind of benefits anyone who looks to repurpose the Town Hall and therefore benefits the town to have that done. You and I also talked offline about benefit of emptying the second floor at least, there are a bunch of partition walls that were put up over the years. And you and I agreed there would be benefit to opening that space up to kind of, you know, I know architects and designers have, are able to see stuff that's not there, but I think it would also help just to see it viscerally, this big open space, because it was an open layout originally up there. So I'm wondering what, what sort of progress has been made on those two fronts.
Good question. On one, on one front, slow progress. On the other front, slightly better progress. But the historic register, as the council probably knows, that, that process starts with the local historic commission. We have not yet developed a request for them, but we are pretty close to that. And if, we will submit to them the request that they approve, and then send that on to, it then goes from there to the Mass Historic, Mass Historic Commission, and then they recommend to the federal government. So that, that process will start. It quite honestly shouldn't take too long. I know last time with the McKelwain, it took roughly a year, if not a little more. We're not anticipating that this will take as long. I had an initial discussion with the Chair of the Historic Commission, David Moore, quite a while back, and, and he was ready to go. So we just have to get, get the time together to get that finished. So that is in the works. To the, to the second floor of the building, just so, maybe it'd be helpful if I let the councilors know what's in that building. Second floor is essentially junk. There's, there's really nothing of any tremendous value on the second floor. The second floor was abandoned when the roof started to fall in a number of years ago. So on the first floor are all, most of our town paper files, which is a collection of about 100 years' worth of, of building files, conservation files, health files, and some planning files. So those are in the process of being sorted and catalogued, and then when they're ready to be moved, our hope is to move those over to the Memorial Building, the basement of the Memorial Building for more permanent storage. So we have, we have engaged the state to look at the records that are there. They've given us permission to dispose of the things that need to be disposed of, and, and given us recommendations about how we go about cataloguing and getting rid of, and sorting through the, not getting rid of, but sorting through the rest. So right now, we've been relying exclusively on extra staff time to do that, so it's been a slow process. We don't, we have, obviously haven't come to the council for funding to do something more robust on that end, because we don't, at this point, don't feel that there's a huge time crunch. And, and it also, those are working files, so people, people continue to need to access on those. To your point about the ups, well, let me finish the general building. Unfortunately, the boiler, we were hoping we would get one more year out of it before we had to terminate it, and it decided to terminate us. And so we have no heat in that building. We've drained the water and, and closed down the water, obviously, in the bathrooms and so forth. We are working on getting a temporary heating system in there, one that meets, obviously meets code. We think we can do that for very short money, and so we're working, working to do that. Your point on the second floor, we have asked the Sheriff's Department to help us with that, and they have let us know that there aren't enough prisoners, I mean, workers, to help, and they've been quite busy throughout the summer, and as the fall continues, they have good weather, they, they're out on roadway crews, they're actually on outdoor paint crews and so forth. So we have them working at the senior center on an indoor paint job, and so they're lined up to come and do some demo work in the second floor of Town Hall when, when they finish up and when the weather turns. So, so I'm, I completely agree. I think that, that building, the second floor particularly, is quite dramatic when we see that cleaned out. And so, so that's, that's on our list of things to do, but it, time and money are, I guess, the issues with us and also with the Sheriff's Department.
I have one more follow-up. So I know with the McKelwain School, we hired an outside consultant to complete the application to get the building on the National Register. I'm wondering, and I believe CPA money was used for that, and I'm wondering if that wouldn't make sense to get that, get that moving, get that process, same process moving, because it is fairly technical application. Is that something you've thought about?
Yes, I talked to the CPC Chair about that briefly, and so she's expecting some sort of application to come, be forthcoming. So again, just a matter of getting it, getting it done.
Great. Thanks.
Other discussion on the Town Hall. Mr. Souza?
No further discussion.
Okay. All right. Moving on then to committee reports, committee reports. Mr. Wood.
I'll report the, there's a couple items on budget finance, but the 101 report here is the fact that we're still working on the resolution in committee. When it comes up on the agenda, we should just jump by that. We're working with Finance Director on some new language and new construction around forecasting, so it'll make sense the next meeting.
Thank you. Other committee reports. Seeing none, we will move on to legislation for action. Ordinance D. FY18005 zoning ordinance prohibiting the retail sale of recreational marijuana. Is there a motion to approve?
Like to move to approve it?
Mr. Gallagher makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, second by Mr. Perry. Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mr. Gallagher, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I, I know we all received the letter this afternoon from Attorney Scannell, and there seems to be some concern about the legality of the way this amendment is in the ordinance. And I do want to click, I do want to clear up the way I see it, how this ordinance made it into, into the ordinance. And the intent of what I wanted to do was not to interfere with the medical facilities as they were given the authority to operate. That, so that's what I, my intention was to do. So the way the ordinance read, I was told that it would interfere with how they were originally approved to operate. So I asked the town manager, I said, could you tweak this ordinance or write something, that's write an amendment up, so I could see that it would not disturb what they, the medical facility was approved to do. So he did. And I looked at it, and I was, I was under the impression that the cultivation part is not something they were initially approved to do. It was simply just a medical facility. So I told the town manager that I am not going to push this forward, will bring it to, I was going to forward it to the Community and Economic Development Committee and the planning board to discuss it at their meeting. So I told the town manager, I can't do that. I don't think that this amendment is, it's giving them something more, not take, not allowing them, not continuing to what they were initially approved to do. So I attended the joint meeting between the Community and Economic Development and the Planning Board, and that night, Councilor Loesch presented the amendment to the committee that night. So that's how this all developed. So it's, and since then, it was even changed again because the language didn't fit what the medical people wanted to do, so it was amended again. So that's really how it all evolved. So I am concerned whether this is legal or not. So I just would like that clarification, Mr. President, if I could. And if there, if there are concerns about the legality of the amendment, then perhaps we can, or postpone this till the 19th, or let it go forward as is and see what the Attorney General has to say. I don't know.
Are you asking the town attorney for his opinion?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins.
So what you have that you're voting on is a zoning ordinance. It has nothing to do with how these businesses operate, the regulations they're required to operate under, where they will be operating, at least as your current reiteration of the order states. It's a zoning ordinance for something that is currently under Massachusetts General Law's 94G in allowable use. You're actually limiting what is in allowable use by essentially saying under, if this is what your intent is to have forward, what this says is that your ordinance prohibits the operation of marijuana establishments as defined in General Law's 94G, Section 1. So first, there's a blanket statement. It's a prohibition on marijuana establishments, which you're absolutely authorized to do under 94G. I don't think anyone would argue that. I think that is what we've heard time and time again. You then carve out an exception for the operation of marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, and marijuana product manufacturers in all zoning districts of Bridgewater. So as, as this reads, you're cutting out, you're carving out those three things as an exception to your general prohibition. Keeping in mind, it's a zoning ordinance, so your prohibition is you're prohibiting something that is allowable. So you're not allowing for marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, and marijuana product manufacturers. Those are allowable under 94G. You're just saying, we're going to make a blanket statement that all other types of marijuana establishments are prohibited in all zoning districts. In this, you're also not saying what zoning districts those things can operate in. In addition to that, you're, you're not specifically stating that these are the current medical marijuana facilities. You're, you're just making a zoning ordinance that prohibits marijuana establishments and carves out exceptions. 94G is extremely specific on this, that your recommend, your recommendation, what you had before you, is absolutely not illegal. 94G says that you, as the town council, may prohibit the operation of one or more types of marijuana establishments within the city or town. That is exactly what you're doing.
Okay, so, all right, one more, one more. So in your view, if we approve this, there should not be any backlash from the Attorney General's Office if this is, this is, yeah?
You followed Mass General Law's 94G. Unless they change it again, and they change the law that allows you to prohibit the operation of one or more types of marijuana establishments within the city or town, I don't see how they could. That you're following the law to a T. That's exactly what you're doing here.
Right. So at the last meeting, you know, I didn't vote for the amendment to be put in, but the council as a whole did, and I supported this going to advertising. So, I mean, I, I think this meets the objective. I know there are some that don't even want the cultivation piece in there. So at this juncture, I'm comfortable with the way this is as amended. So, at this juncture, I'm comfortable with the way this is as amended. It's not everything everybody wanted, but I, I don't know what else we can do tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, did you make the second? I think you did.
I did. Thank you. Going back to some questions, and this is through you to the town attorney, there were some point references that medical versus retail cultivator, so to speak, is there a designation between the two, one allowing one, one allowing the other, or can they do both?
So, it's a good question. I don't think it's a question for you in this context first, so let's start with that. That, that's a licensing question, has nothing to do with the zoning that you're currently doing. So, I think that is a concern of any company that wants to do both. They're going to have to comply with Massachusetts General Laws, and I'm certainly not here to say that they're going to be able to do it or not be able to do it. I think there is some contemplation, as you've heard, about virtual separation. I think that the Cannabis Commission currently has subcommittees that are looking into what virtual separation is going to be. I can tell you, when I sent the council the notes of that subcommittee, I followed them very carefully, and as you can see, they're contemplating co-located facilities, and they're talking about virtual separation in terms of point-of-sale software, so that their companies that are doing both, they can see what they're doing, and if they're doing on the retail side or on the medical side. But certainly, I don't think, myself as the town attorney, giving you legal advice, I would feel comfortable giving you any advice on what these companies should or should not be doing within the confines of their business. This is a zoning ordinance, that is all this is.
Okay. So, to that point, being on the Community and Economic Development Committee, I was unable to make the initial discussion on this, but I had sent an email to my colleagues on the committee where my stance was, and I was also in support of, of this amendment, simply to the fact that, number one, as an existing business that we do have here in town, now, the state has gone ahead and voted this in, much to dismay of many of us. So, we have to deal with it one way or another. We have a facility here in town, we have two facilities. We have to look at it from a number of different angles. Ultimately, we've heard the town speak, we want to go forward with a, a ban on, on the retail sales. I want a ban on the retail sales. I do not want to see retail marijuana stores in downtown Bridgewater, or any place in downtown Bridgewater, or in the surrounding towns of Bridgewater. But we do have an existing business, and they, they cultivate, they grow, they distribute for medical purposes. I'm sure they'll be seeking, again, potentially, the ability to do that to any other community in the Commonwealth that might decide to do retail, or have a wholesale facility, whatever. I don't believe we should tie their hands in being able to do their business. The, it's, 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 it's new ground, we don't know how it's gonna go through the state, but again, it's, it's like having, say, an alcohol wholesaler, and we're gonna limit them on what they can distribute. I see it on a similar plane as far as a business aspect of things. I look at it as a doctor, I look at it as a father, I look at it as a business owner. Lot of different angles to look at it, lot of different things to consider. I think it's a fair compromise down the middle that's going to give us the best compromise overall, that's gonna help protect the town, but also allow the business to function. So, that's why I was in support of the ordinance.
Other discussion on the motion to approve? Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I will be voting against this ban, I may be the only one voting against this ban. Allow me to explain why. This ban is like locking the doors on a convertible that has its top down. The black market for pot is alive and well in Bridgewater, and this ban will only make it stronger. This ban creates a huge arbitrage opportunity for those dealing in the marketplace. Arbitrage occurs when a single product has two different price points, and you can literally buy low and sell high at the same time. Pot goes for about $40 per ounce from a retail store, but it's 60 percent, $60 an ounce on the market, in the market. This ban will do nothing to stop BSU students from getting pot. 7,000 BSU students live off-campus or drive to Bridgewater every day, they will bring pot with them to town, some will make a profit through arbitrage. This ban will not stop Brendan's Smoke Shop from selling bongs and weed grinders, as the CEO has clearly said he will. This ban will not stop the vape stores from selling marijuana vaporizers. This ban will not stop a person from vaping marijuana in the back of barits. While illegal, there's no way to tell if a person is using pot or not with a pop, pot vape. This ban will not reduce to 14,000, 800 marijuana accessories available for home delivery on Amazon. This ban will rob Bridgewater of almost $1 million in tax revenue that we will be handing to Brockton, Middleborough, Halifax, and possibly East Bridgewater. We estimate the taxes based on a McDonald's store, but the revenues are much, much higher. Bans will be challenged in court because the revisions to 14, 94G are an uneven application of the law across the Commonwealth. My expectation is that we'll, we will need to zone for retail in the not-too-distant future. I looked at opioid, opioid rates through the use of Narcan doses. In Bridgewater, the last year, about 76 doses saved lives. This year's rate is running about the same. I'm told that 2014 and 15 were, were much, much higher. So, that's, that's 76 people that were saved last year because of Narcan. So, that's a, a metric we can use to find out if there's actually an increased opioid use. Now, many people have talked about gateway drugs, there's a lot of reports out there on this, there's a lot of reports to say it's not a gateway drug, there's a lot of reports to say alcohol is a gateway drug, there's a lot of reports to say that tobacco is a gateway drug. There's also now reports coming out to say alcohol use is down, and that there's positive health benefits from, from marijuana use. There's gonna be a lot of reports, we're all gonna agree or disagree on what they mean. But, when I looked at the, the Narcan use, I was using it to understand how big of a opioid problem do we have, and in the year since Question 4 went legal, did that rate increase as an indicator to say, did, did the availability of marijuana, granted, we're not doing retail yet, but did the availability of marijuana increase those other drugs' use? And the first observation is, is no. So, our plan should have been simple, let the two medical dispensaries convert to retail, and that's it. We can talk about, you know, virtualization and that sort of thing, but when retail goes live here in about a year, the medical use is gonna diminish immensely, because the medical use right now is a substitute for retail in, in many cases. There's not a lot of difference in the product set, so, so I expect that the, the market's gonna bottom out on, on medical, maybe fall out altogether. Overall, my district voted to support Question 4. The majority of those I've spoken to in the past weeks continue to support in the same ratios that I saw voting for in my district. Therefore, as their representative, I will be voting against the ban on retail shops. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Souza?
As a cosponsor of this ordinance, I stand by my cosponsor and agree in everything he has said, and will be voting it, approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. I'm gonna make an amendment that I'm not quite sure I'll have a second for, which is to just put a period after Town of Bridgewater in, the second Town of Bridgewater in the first sentence, and remove any exceptions for the ban. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you say that again, please?
Just restore the complete ban, as opposed to having an exception for marijuana cultivators, product manufacturers, et cetera, et cetera. There was a second by Mrs. Loesch. I'll just again state, my position from the last meeting was, I think if we do a clean ban, and then if we need to clean it up, and if we run into the problem that Mr. Wood suggests might happen, and I fear might happen, that a court's gonna say, no, you, you have to allow it, then we'll be able to deal with it from where we are, as opposed to trying to guess and, and make things work. So, I think it's just better to have a clean ban, move on, and deal with the ramifications as they come down the line. Mrs. Loesch?
I agree. I, to Town Attorney's points, this is a zoning ordinance, looking to zone a ban of retail marijuana, so the amendment takes care of that, and we can look at additional ordinances and orders as we get more information from the state.
Further discussion on the amendment? Mr. George?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I, I think understanding that everybody in this room wants to protect Bridgewater in, in, in one way, shape, or form, and I, I think, you know, collectively, most people are gonna agree that's what we're looking to do. And I understand, Mr. President, your rationale with that, I'm not saying you're being irrational about it. My concern, from the very beginning, is the, the potential for unintended consequences of us putting an ordinance in place that can adversely affect an existing business, that can actually talk about what others have said around legal action, that potentially could void all of this. And if this does get voided by a temporary injunction, or whatever the term is, we may not be able to control anything that comes into town until that's rectified. I, I don't wanna talk badly about the legal profession, but I think anybody can shop for the right attorney and the right judge, and probably get what they're looking for, at least from a temporary basis. That's where I'm concerned. My initial concern was how we decided on this, I've changed my mind. But, to, to have people, for me personally, this is my own personal opinion, folks, to stand up there and say that this is really about economics, in all honesty, I don't know what the economics are, if there are anything. I'm looking at this from the unintended consequence of what we have in town. Bridgewater is very unique in all of the communities of having an, at least one, if not, we have two, medical establishments already in town. So, when, we're not looking at this like other communities where they don't have anything in town, and being able to zone those so they can't come in, from that particular point. I'm not saying it's exactly the same, but, again, you could stretch it any way that you want. And for me, to, to look at it and say, well, let's do it this way, and then if something happens, then we'll deal with it then, I'm very concerned at the fact that if by doing it that way, under our circumstances now, that down the road, that thing that does come, actually hurts us in regards to what we can control that comes into this town. That has been my stance from the get-go, that is still my stance now.
Thank you, Mr. George. Further discussion? Mr. Perry hasn't gone on the amendment yet.
Okay. I, I agree with what Mr. George is saying, and I would, I would be more in support of what you're saying, President Fitzgibbons, if we did not already have the facilities here that we have in town. It is, it's, it's, it's something that we do have to consider. And again, down the line, we don't know what the unintended consequences Mr. George referred to, that a complete outright ban potentially could have, if, you know, again, legal action might need to be taken by the potential companies against the town for the legislation that we're passing. So, I feel that this kind of, almost protects us in a way, that allows us, you know, to have the ban in place, which is what the townspeople want, that's what we've heard, but also allows for the existing businesses to be able to function. And not any of us here in this room are gonna know what this business is doing, who they're, they're doing business with. They're gonna continue to function as they've been functioning right along, and anyone, unless they have a medical marijuana card going there, is using their business, no one else is going to their business. We don't know what they're doing with their business. But they are here in our town, and we allow them to be here in our town. So, I think, as written, the way the amendment is versed, it gives us the best protection in both sides of the coin here.
Thank you. Oh, no, sorry, sorry about that, folks. Mr. Gallagher?
You know, what, Mr. President, one, and I, I support the amendment, because Bridgewater's not unique in, in what we're doing. There are many towns, all towns throughout the state that are struggling with this issue, some have made their decisions, and some have not. But, whatever happens, I've been told that the Cannabis Control Commission and, and the group that has been established will look at how a town is proceeding, and, and be sensitive to what that town has voted. And in our case, the, the town voted no, a year, over a year ago, and now the council is prepared to make a decision tonight. They'll be sensitive to those decisions. What I do think might come down the road are lawsuits filed in, in court, not through the Cannabis Control Commission. But I, I do think that Bridgewater, the way we're proceeding is, is not unique, it's very similar to how other communities are proceeding at this time, and we don't know what's gonna happen down the road, but at least we have made a decision, we've made a determination, this is really how we want to handle this situation, and I think that the, the state anyway, I don't know about the courts, but I think the, the state will look to us to see how we have handled this, and where we, where our thoughts are, and be sensitive to those needs. Thank you.
Mr. Wood on the amendment? Sorry, Ms. Loesch, I gotta take the people who haven't spoken yet first.
Actually, I'd like to remind people about how zoning ordinances are approved and, and accepted directly and directs, directly goes with the amendment. Voting on the amendment doesn't require a, a two-thirds majority, but when we get to the final act, it does. And should a zoning change fail, Mass. State Law says that you cannot bring it forward, or something similar to that, for another six months. So, if a ban fails here tonight, we won't be able to bring it back for another vote for six months. If it succeeds, there's also a difference in the way that this form of government now, as a town council operates, than when we were selectmen town meeting, passing zoning, zoning ordinances. In selectmen town meeting form of government, zoning ordinances, once approved by the town meeting, then go to the Attorney General's office for review, and suggestions come back from the Attorney, Attorney General's office. In the town council form of government, this form of government, items that are passed as zoning changes do not go to the town, to the Attorney General for approval or modification, they're just simply sent in a final form. So, so any challenge to the language as it exists, as it's amended or whatnot, is ours and ours alone, and someone would have to sue the town over that language if they disagreed with it. It's not gonna come from the Attorney General's office, and someone can ask the attorney, town attorney, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm right. Thanks.
Mr. Haley?
So, not, not being one of the new guys in zoning and ban versus no ban, so, what, to overturn this, outside of what's been mentioned by something coming from the state, which may not happen, or something coming from a, a business person, are there other ways that this would have, someone would have the ability to, to reverse this ban or release the ban? I mean, we as a council have stated the ban goes forward. Is there a process, because we don't have to go to the, the state? Do we, we nine have that ability to then say, there's no more ban, and lift the ban just amongst ourselves by a simple processing of an ordinance?
I'll ask the town attorney for that opinion.
If you decided, let's say that you voted yes, and this ban went into place, and then you all brought forward something else that lifted it, you, you absolutely can do that, because it wasn't a, a no vote, it wasn't a denial of the zoning ordinance, it was an allowable. So, at that point, you can actually change it again. Absolutely.
Is there also a six-month window on that?
No, and, and, and just to clarify, I think the six-month window relates to, to an ordinance that fails here, but I think it's a two-year period on a zoning ordinance under 40A.
Which is?
Two years, which is the, the law that essentially governs zoning and zoning ordinances and zoning amendments under bylaws or ordinances. Correct.
We'll have to have a meeting afterwards.
Yeah, yeah, I'm actually, I was looking it up as you were saying it.
Ms. Loesch?
Through you to the town attorney, does this amendment prohibit the current business of the two medical marijuana facilities that we have in town?
Does the amendment? Does the amendment?
Correct.
As I read the amendment, if you just put in the period after Bridgewater and struck with exception of marijuana cultivators, marijuana product manufacturers, and marijuana testing facilities also defined, and then you kept in the sentence, "This prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes," I don't think that it prohibits them from doing their sale, distribution, and cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, the clerk can call the roll.
Before the roll?
Mr. Perry.
So, is your amendment to just the, including the last line, or everything from that point on?
Just that, just that exception on cultivation, et cetera, through Section 1, and allowing the medical to continue.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you leaving the last sentence?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hold on. Amendment.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Dr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Five in favor, four against.
All right. So, that having been done, I'm not, we'll go back to the main motion and further discussion on that, that we've now essentially created a ban on retail establishments and growing for retail, as I understand it, Mr. Rollins, and continued to...
What you've done, as you said, the town of Bridgewater prohibits the operation of any marijuana establishments as defined under Mass. general laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, in all zoning districts of the town of Bridgewater. I would have to look, but I would assume that a medical marijuana establishment or facility is considered a marijuana establishment, but I would have to check 94G to verify that. That would be your only little hiccup. But then you go on to say, "The prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana." So, I think you would just want to verify, and I can do that, in 94G, the definition of marijuana establishments.
Okay. And I really, I really hate to do this to folks, and it's certainly going to be the will of the council on this, but I think, out of an abundance of caution, it's probably a good idea to send this back to advertising as amended. So, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. George. I just think, you know, we've changed it, we need to give folks an opportunity to resee it in the paper, if people still read papers, and let folks digest it now.
So, I can, I found under 94G, the way they define a marijuana establishment is a marijuana cultivator, independent testing laboratory, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business. So, I do believe I've seen the Attorney General from towns, because Mr. Wood is absolutely correct, the way it works is when a town bylaw goes to the Attorney General's office, our ordinances do not. I believe that they've done it with just that caveat at the end, that the prohibition does not apply, but you may want to carve in, if your intent is not to prohibit the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes, maybe you carve in some additional exception there. I mean, I know you've already said the prohibition does not apply to those. I don't know what more you really could do, but I just want to point out the definition of marijuana establishment.
Thank you. I just think it's important to let folks see it advertised again for two more weeks. I will say, before I turn it over to Mr. George, that the amendment passed five to four. The ordinance does need to pass six to three in order to take full effect. So, that having been said, Mr. George, your comments on sending to advertising?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Take this in the spirit of the intent that I say it, but this seems like a very simplistic statement that has a lot of complexity to it. I honestly wish I could sit here and say that this is not a complicated matter. I know for some people that are very passionate about it, and I appreciate that, and I think we could, if we all sat here and said it was very straightforward, and we just moved forward and do it, and had our confidence that we're doing this the right way, I don't think we would need to do this. But to President Fitzgibbons' comment, out of abundance of caution, I think this is the right move to make.
Further discussion on sending to advertising. Ms. Loesch.
What additional information are we looking to glean from having two more weeks of people look at the ordinance?
I'd just not prefer to have anybody say, "You made it more restrictive without me knowing and without me having a chance to come up here and say, 'I was for it the way it was written, I thought that was what you were voting on, and now I'm completely against it.'" That's, I don't know if anyone will do that, but I want to make sure that everyone has their fair share and fair ability to come up and speak. So, that's my rationale. Mr. Gallagher.
And I respect that, Mr. President, but I don't think this needs to go back to advertising. We have hashed it out here. We have been to public hearings, joint public hearings. We've heard, we have heard from citizens for the past three months now. I respect the abundance of caution, but, I mean, I think that I'd like to see us vote on this tonight, but that's what I'd like to see.
That's your prerogative to vote that way, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Haley.
I had to say that there was a lot of contention about, and discussion about the verbiage and the change of the verbiage and not enough notice, and there was a big uproar via emails, phone calls, walking through Roach Brothers, all of the above. So, on that respect, I'm going to certainly say that, yes, let's do that. So, everybody here that wanted it worded in a particular way, I'm not sure if this goes back to the original intent that the two committees put forward, but we get behind it as a committee put it forward, and then everybody, to your point, again, not to reiterate it, sees what they'd like to see, acknowledges that that's what they wanted, and then, that's good. I think that would add some clarity.
Mr. Souza.
No comment this time.
Okay.
I, you know.
Ms. Loesch.
Mr. Haley, to your point, I think the difference between this and that is that that amendment came in a packet, not in an open discussion that we've had. So, the people who felt that things were happening behind closed doors, this is completely the opposite of that, where we've had this full discussion, the amendments, and the conversation in the meeting. So, that's just where I think the difference is between advertising and the previous amendment.
Mr. Columbodis.
Another difference between the two instances is that, when it came in the packet, there was time between when it was introduced in the packet and when it was heard at a council. Here, we're having ten minutes advanced notice of this rather substantial amendment. I think it speaks against your point, Ms. Loesch.
Further discussion on sending to advertising. Seeing none, the clerk can call the roll.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
No.
Five in favor, four against.
Okay. So, we'll send that back to advertising. I apologize, folks, but we're trying to get things done that the majority of the council can get on board with, and we need six. Do we need, do we want to take a little break and let everyone?
Take a five-minute break.
Yeah.
Take a five-minute break. I just want to remember that. I tried to look in here, but two years, like, strikes me, though. This is, yes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I, it is two years.
That's what I think. Six months.
By charter, right.
But I might have told them six months before. That could have been my...
Did you look at 40A?
I'm going to be difficult. No, I am too. After I tried a case today and had an expert witness on the stand for three hours about construction defects. Oh, my brain. I was bored. I don't know how the judge was listening. The guy was...
He probably wasn't. Was it a marketing question?
No, the guy was listening. He was asking questions, he was, like, taking notes. I was like, it's great.
What's the problem? What is...
Sign of PNS. PNS says, "Doesn't need compliance with the bill." Then they do a limited warranty. Says, "We warn it's in compliance with the bill." Okay. Brand-new house. So, the building inspector goes in, does an inspection, lifts a CO. So, my people don't get another inspection. They're like, "It's in compliance with the code, it's fine." They live there, they start noticing a bunch of crap.
All right. Get moving.
Clearing out.
I'd give it to Michael.
Frank doesn't have to sign that, though. But a minimum, let's say, six months.
As long as a majority.
Correct.
Oh, thanks, Doc.
Can you...
I just thought they were good. They have all the signatures of all the councils.
So, so they move in, they start seeing all this stuff, and they put in a claim on the warranty, like, six months into the one-year, you know, new builds, they all have the one-year warranty. Plus, there's all these implied warranties. So, they put in the claim, but they don't notice all the building violations. They have to do with, like, the riser or the stairs. Crap, you wouldn't, you and I wouldn't look at that and go, "Yeah, that's it." But they're, like, safety issues. So, guy ignores their claim. They get a contractor come in, contractor goes, "Jeez, I see a lot of..." Then they call another expert, come in and really, guy's been a building inspector in a bunch of different towns, great guy, he's in Weston now. So, he then comes in, finds a million, like, every single staircase is off, the rise and run. And it happened to, it was like a change of, some just didn't, I mean, as simple as, you can only have, like, a quarter of a difference, and some of the steps are, like, an inch off. So, have you ever walked down a stair?
Oh, yeah, no. I know, you can only have, like, a...
It's very, and you notice...
The tolerance is very small.
And you notice, I mean, people have died falling downstairs, and so, their argument is, "These people should have done another inspection, because it was readily..." Wait a minute, they bought a new house, they got all these warranties, and the building inspector gave a certificate of occupancy. What else are these people...
So, in a case like that, is the town, are they joining the town?
I haven't seen the town. If we lose. But the contractor built the house. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. I see. That's fascinating.
It's an interesting case. It's going to come down to if that was reasonable or not, you know?
Mrs. Kleparis, if you could let Mr. Haley know, we're ready to get going again. Thank you.
You draw the short straw? You have to say?
We got to pay for these.
All right. Yeah. He was sitting there. All right. Why don't we come back to order?
Come back. Oh, come back now, you.
Uh, what? We've got order FY18012, general fund transfer to transfer station, balance 2018 budget, moving $29,761.50 from Bristol Aggie due to fewer students being enrolled to fund the transfer station in the same amount.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. George. I believe the Budget and Finance Committee and Finance Committee's both approved of. Okay. Any discussion, Mr. Wood?
No. Good move.
Mr. George?
No.
Any other further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk can call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to order OFY18013, general fund transfer of undesignated fund balance, $1,309,935 from Pre-Cash General Fund into Other Employee Liability Trust, GF Stabilization Trust, Capital Stabilization Trust, OPEB Trust, and One-Time Unforeseen Expenditure Trust in the amount shown, equalling the $1.309,935 million. Is there a motion to approve?
The move.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. George. Mr. Wood, discussion?
The Budget Finance met on this and recommend passed by 3-0, and I'd also like to comment that the trust funds that you see here are relatively new in the past several years. They're part of a strategy to fund things in the future, and this movement here is in keeping with that strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George.
All set.
Any other further discussion, Mr. Columbodis?
Think it's good to plan ahead and take care of our liability, so I fully support the order.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk can call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to order OFY18013, general fund transfer of undesignedated fund balance, $1,309,935 from Pre-Cash General Fund into Other Employee Liability Trust, GF Stabilization Trust, Capital Stabilization Trust, OPEB Trust, and One-Time Unforeseen Expenditure Trust in the amount shown, equalling the $1.309,935 million. Is there a motion to approve?
The move.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. George. Mr. Wood, discussion?
The Budget Finance met on this and recommended passed by 3-0, and I'd also like to comment that the trust funds that you see here are relatively new in the past several years. They're part of a strategy to fund things in the future, and this movement here is in keeping with that strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George.
All set.
Any other further discussion, Mr. Columbodis?
Think it's good to plan ahead and take care of our liability, so I fully support the order.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Ms. Homberg.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Nine in favor, none against.
Order FY18007, creation of the Town Hall Arts and Commerce Center. Is there a motion?
A motion to withdraw.
Withdraw, Mr. Columbodis? Okay, is there a second?
Second. We'll let the market speak. There doesn't seem to be much appetite for this sort of directed RFP, so we'll put out another general or wide-ranging RFP and see where it takes us.
Yeah, we discussed this at our recent CEDC meeting, and we were all in agreement that it was time that we withdrew.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution F Y eighteen zero zero one, directing the town manager to explore acquiring specific land, Summer Street. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Haley. Um, Mr. George, discussion?
Um. So I'm going on the assumption Summer Street's all set, what works.
Um. If you were to vote this, then.
To direct me to end the process of.
Thank you.
Of exploring.
Explore, sorry.
Not, not to begin the process.
Sorry, it's getting late.
Uh, Mr. Haley.
Uh, no.
Further discussion, Mr. Columbotus?
Uh, the Community and Economic Development Committee was. In agreement with this in principle. Um, of course, the specifics aren't clear, so I do wanna, I think it's important to stress the explorer element of this, but we. Expect to hear back from the town manager. On the prospects for this.
Mr. Wood.
I, overall, I'm, I'm fine with it. Um, just, just a parliamentarian note. Um, we're asking, we're ordering the town manager to explore, which is kind of, um, issue. Um, it, it may have, maybe better either to make it as an order with the expectation that he comes back with some sort of result. Or the resolution should be a little less directive, saying the council would like to learn more about. The acquisition through whatever, which would have indicated our opinion of the town, that the town manager should take action. But in a resolution, we really can't hold it against him if he doesn't take action. In an order, we can, in terms of managing the manager. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
I abstain.
Oh.
For the record, I did abstain from discussions at, in committee.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution F Y eighteen zero zero three, F Y two thousand nine policy guidelines. We're not going to. Go forward with that this evening, Mr. Wood?
If we could just put it on next week's, next meeting's agenda.
Next meeting's agenda. Right, um, moving forward to old business. I would ask, in continuation of the marijuana discussion, that we put off any of the marijuana. Old business till next meeting and continue on.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Approve what?
Of propose ordinance D F Y eighteen zero zero two, the temporary moratorium on retail sales.
Okay. Is there a second?
Point of order, we're, we're just, we would vote to send to advertising, right? We can't approve it now.
Yeah, we'd have to send that to advertising.
Then make a motion to send to advertising.
I'll second that.
Okay, made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. Discussion, Mr. Wood?
The thinking here is, regardless of the action that we take on the ban. Um, I think we need to take a, a belts and suspenders approach, as we've heard before. Which is, we can most certainly, uh, create a ban, which we may do later on. But we may also want to vote in the moratorium, um, just to better protect ourselves for, uh, the extended period, which leads into, uh. I think it's December of two thousand eighteen. Um, in, as an extra caution to limit these, the, the, the businesses while, um, the commission sorts out what the regulations are.
Mr. Haley.
Um. I'm not necessarily a belt and suspenders type of guy, but, uh. I do want to move this. If, I don't want to stop it. I do want to keep it going for essentially the same reason, so I suppose I'm a belt and suspenders guy, but yes. Let, you can put it on a shelf, put it up there as long as we have it. There. So I, I don't want to slow it down. I would like to keep it moving, at least get it to advertising.
Mr. Perry.
Thank you through you to the town attorney and town manager. Can we have both a moratorium and a ban? You can have both.
You, you can't have both, you can't vote both simultaneously in. I would assume that the, the order of the voting would be you'd vote on the ban first. And then if the ban was allowed, then the moratorium is, is irrelevant. And then rego, if the, if the ban is shot down, then there's a new vote on the moratorium. But no, you can't, you can't have both things exist simultaneously, obviously. They would contradict each other.
Right.
So I would say, based on the order of voting, what should be done is that the ban should be voted first. And depending on the outcome of that, that'll probably dictate the outcome, uh, of the moratorium. But once you have a ban, you cannot have a moratorium.
Further discussion on sending to advertising? Mr. Columbotus?
I, I like the idea of belts and suspenders. I think there's plenty of time. Um, do this if the ban should fail and, um. If nothing else, we should save the five hundred bucks or whatever it costs to advertise it.
I'm, uh, completely against the idea. Um, we just had a whole crowd here and they all left and now we're trying to. Ram this through without anyone observing us, not that, I'm putting those in air quotes. Um, we can wait, we can wait two weeks and, uh, and if, if a ban fails or if. Uh, whatever happens with the, the ban comes up in two weeks, we can always. Uh, advertise this and take it up at our first meeting in January, so I'll be voting no. Mr. Wood.
It, it's too bad everybody left. This was on the agenda for action tonight, so I'm sorry everybody left. Um. I, I understand everybody's sentiment. I understand that you can't have both at the same time. Um, on the other hand, um, I would like to be prepared because, as most people know, January first. Is when businesses can start applying for licenses, even though the regulations haven't popped out yet. Um, I, I believe that's right.
I'm pretty sure it's actually March.
March, okay. Okay, cause this is December and we've been talking about this since August. So I'd like to get some action somewhere, so.
Just vote, just vote for the ban in, in two weeks and we'll be fine.
No. Uh, so I, I'm willing at this point to withdraw my initial motion if, uh, Mr. Haley is.
Yes.
All right, so we'll continue that till our next meeting, Ms. Homberg. Um, zoning ordinance F Y eighteen zero zero eight. Without objection, can we continue that till the next meeting?
Is there a reason?
Um, retail overlay usage for.
It's marijuana related.
Marijuana.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I had the other one.
Yeah, not Easy Street.
Yeah, sorry, wrong E.
Yep.
Do we need to vote? Yes?
Um, I didn't hear anyone object, so.
Okay, so we're not voting on it.
Uh, and the same with ordinance F Y eighteen zero zero nine. Retail tax on marijuana sales.
Well, would it harm to move to Budget Finance of Finance Committee? Cause it's not a, it's not a, uh, zoning ordinance, so. Um, if the ban comes up, then fine, otherwise.
That's fine. We don't have to advertise it. We don't, I mean, you guys meet on a regular basis anyway, so. If you want to take it.
Motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move it to Budget Finance Finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, Mr. Wood?
I, I think this is, uh, just a strategic discussion that if, if the ban fails or if something causes. A lack of ban, we need to have a discussion, ongoing discussion. Doesn't harm any discussion about a ban or a moratorium.
Mr. Haley, progress.
Other discussion? I'm okay with this. We don't have to advertise it or anything. We, they're already meeting. Regularly on other things, so it's not like we're asking people to carve out time for joint meeting. Uh, so Ms. Homberg, uh, call the roll on moving to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
Mrs. Loesch.
No.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
No.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. George. Seven in favor, two.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance, uh, D F Y eighteen zero zero three, zoning ordinance, zoning map amendment, Easy Street. With the amendments as indicated, is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Made by Mr. Perry.
President, I actually like to make an amendment to this, please.
If you'd want to make a second first.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Perry, any discussion?
Uh, I believe, uh, we took a look at this and I, I know that, uh, Mr. George had a question on one of the lots of land. I believe we discovered it was town-owned property.
Mr. George.
Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be offering an amendment to delete map thirty-nine lot four from this. Um. In communications with the town engineer, conservation agent, conversations with the, the town manager. Um, I understand the rationale behind. Changing that zoning from industrial to residential, but I do not agree with that change. There's no immediate need. The town has control over that property. Um. So unless there is a driving compelling reason to change that, I see no need to change it. Hence the reason I'm offering the amendment.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? To amend?
Second.
Second by Mr. Columbotus, uh.
Could I have some clarification?
Mr. George and then Mr. Columbotus.
If you, you want to clarify.
Yeah, just for a point of information, we're talking about eliminating that bottom triangle, so it would include. It's not just thirty-nine four, that would be excluded from the switch to residential. Uh, commercial, I mean, industrial. If you look on your map, you've got that triangular shape. It would be that whole triangular shape and not just that one lot, right?
Well, it, it's, it's my, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that the entire thirty-nine four is undeveloped as it stands right now.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it may be a quirky type of lot itself. But my understanding is that by not making this change, it does not adversely affect anything that's on there right now.
Right, I, I guess I'm just talking about in terms of the boundaries. I mean, can't, we, we need to have straight lines in our boundary, right?
Okay.
So if this, it seems like, I'm not sure what the language would look like, but, uh. Seem this whole triangle should be. Limited. Yeah. Right, so I guess I would make an amendment to your amendment, which is, this is lot, um. Thirty-nine three. Right. Is that the one below it? It's, it's both, it surrounds thirty-nine four.
Around, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Just.
Can't see it on our copy.
Zoning likes to create consistent shapes. Yeah, that's, this is three as well? Okay, so it's.
And all this is town-owned property?
Right.
And this is all, is this landlocked? No. Oh, entryway right there, okay.
This is where the well is, right?
Wells are.
Town wells?
Pump state, yeah. Pump stations here, the wells are here. Again, my, the spirit of this amendment is to keep those undeveloped town-owned lands under the same zoning they are today. Not changing them. There's no need to change them.
So can I offer an amendment to the amendment?
Sure.
I, I seconded the second.
Yeah.
The original. I would like to exclude thirty, lot. Map thirty-nine lot three. For the change.
Okay.
As well.
I'll, and I'll second that.
Okay, so why don't we make that one motion from Mr. George instead?
Okay.
Just say, you're amending it as to strike.
Thirty-nine.
Map thirty-nine lot three, map thirty-nine lot four.
Correct, so that, that's my motion.
And Mr. Columbotus, you second that?
I will second that, yes.
Okay, further discussion? On that?
So based on the motion, sorry, so based on the motion, it would remain industrial, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Any other further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, the clerk can call the roll.
If I may, just, just real quick, uh, and I'm not sure how this was originally drafted, but then it talks about the resultant, uh, industrial A zone. Um, I don't know if you want to, if you're gonna strike those from, um, the rezoning as rez A B. You're not rezoning anything at the bottom part where it says the, uh, resultant industrial A zone. You may want to put those in there just to.
Right.
Be clear that those stay as industrial.
Okay.
Just as part of your amendment. I'm, I'm just thinking to clarify, zoning, you want to be very specific.
Yep. So can I amend, can I?
Yep.
Add the amendment.
So what I'd like to make an amendment to move map thirty-nine lot three and map thirty-nine lot four. Under the resultant industrial A zone, which will compromise the following lots along Plymouth Street as follows. So those will be moved to that, that spot, those two.
And you're still on board with seconding that, Mr. Columbotus?
Second, yes.
Any further discussion on that? Clerk can call the roll.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to order O two zero one seven zero three.
That was just the amendment.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
It's all right.
It's getting late. Um, all right, so back to the main motion now, as amended. Uh, further discussion on the main motion? Mr. Columbotus?
I just want to point out that this is, I, no one seems to know why the, why houses were built in industrial A, but it was done. It was a mistake in the past. And we were forced to, uh, fix it now. Um. I just hope that the planning board or whomever else, uh, allowed this in non-conforming use will be more careful in the future.
Yes, Mr. Gallagher.
I'm just concerned, I mean, I have no problem with voting on this tonight, but I just want to make sure that it doesn't interfere with the developer's project. And that the change that we made doesn't interfere with that. Or should the Community and Economic Development Committee look at this again? But that's, that's my concern. I'm, I'll vote. I'm comfortable voting for it. I just don't know if it interferes with what the purpose of the developer wanted to do. And the reason why it was changed to begin with.
My understanding, Mr. George, that town wells are on those two lots.
Correct.
So.
And, and according to the communication, there was nothing for a developer. It was more around a caution that makes it a little less. Intrusive on the wells if they're residential versus industrial, but it doesn't eliminate the issue that residential could affect the wells. Hence they're town-owned and are under our control. That's why I see no compelling need to change those to residential.
Mr. Perry.
And just to answer your question, Ms. Gallagher, we had this discussion at the C E D cell, C E T C level already, so we're, we're on board with, with these changes.
Mr. Souza.
No comment.
Okay. Try, try to stay awake. We're, we're all struggling here.
We're almost there.
I want to see what a smoke.
Uh, all right, then the clerk can call the roll.
Yeah.
This is to send it to advertising?
Oh.
Oh.
To send to advertising.
Yes.
Coming back.
Okay. Okay. Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All right, moving on to order two zero one seven zero three nine.
President?
Yes.
It's past ten thirty.
Yep, but we're still on the same old item, so we don't have to worry about that till.
New business.
Uh, procure services for zoning consultant. Is there a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
So moved.
Made by Mr. George?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Mr. George, any discussion?
Um. Yeah, I just hope, I hope it come, comes out. I think we need the consultant. I don't know if we need one twenty-five for that, so hopefully it comes out a little bit lower. But I think it needs discussion.
Mr. Perry.
I would agree with those sentiments.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Souza and then Mr. Columbotus. Mr. Souza.
Okay, back in July, I brought in a, a recommendation of forming a committee to look into this issue. Councilman Wood sent it off to the Strategic Planning Committee. Three months later, the chairman said at the meeting that he did not know it was there. He finally had a hearing. And we're still waiting for that hearing's results to come back to the council. I don't think we should be voting on this until he brings it back. I don't think any council committee should just be holding things up and waiting for something else to happen like this.
Thank you, Mr. Columbotus and Mrs. Loesch.
Um. I would just, uh, if this does go to the Budget and Finance Committee, I would urge them to do a, a comparison of what this sort of. Rezoning, um, costs typically. I don't, it sounds like a lot of money, but our zoning laws are a mess. And so they deter, uh, private investment and sort of clean them up would encourage private investment and pay for itself, um, many times over. So I strongly, uh, support this.
Ms. Loesch.
Uh, Mr. Souza, point of information, we're not voting on this amendment tonight. We're voting on moving it to another committee, Budget and Finance, to review the cost. So it has left strategic planning and strategic planning is bringing it back to the council level. level to then have this vote to move it to another committee.
Okay, further discussion on sending to the committees? Seeing none, the clerk can call the roll.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
None.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one against.
Okay, it's now ten forty P M., and we're on, uh, new business, item N., and we need a motion to suspend our rules to continue if we'd like to.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Perry. Seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Uh. Any discussion?
I got, I got a little more stamina. I can, I can do it.
Seeing none, uh, clerk can call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch.
No.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Miss, Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
No.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Seven in favor, two against.
Okay, moving on to ordinance, new business ordinance F Y eighteen zero eleven amend Elm Street Retail Overlay District. Want to continue this to the next meeting, Mr. Haley?
Uh, yes, as agreed.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to ordinance F Y eighteen zero one two vacant and abandoned properties. Mr. Columbodis.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. This is, um, an ordinance which is essentially an, an amendment of an existing ordinance. Um, our existing ordinance, chapter one eighty of our, uh, administrative code deals with problem properties. Um, vacant and abandoned, and it, the title is the registration of vacant and abandoned properties. Unfortunately, it only applied to residential properties, and as we've seen with the several, uh, commercial properties in town, they've remained abandoned. The mobile station is kind of probably the most noticeable one. Um, so the Community and Economic Development Committee, uh, at first, there was an, an ordinance to create a whole new ordinance to deal with commercial properties. We met with, uh, town attorney Rollins, and he suggested that we instead amend the existing chapter one eighty to include commercial properties, and that's exactly what this ordinance does. It, it really just changes the definition, retains most of the original language, but any place where there's a reference to residential properties, it, um, expands that definition to include commercial and institutional properties. So it's really rather simple that way. And there are also some scribners errors that we, um, cleaned up in the original language. Their, the original language referred to paragraph, lettered paragraphs, whereas there's no such thing in this ordinance, and it seems like the intent was to instead refer to the numbered sections, so we made those changes also. Um, so this is a, this is the teeth with which the town can, uh, address properties that remain vacant and, and really undermine, uh, further development throughout town. Um, so this is, we think this is, uh, really important. I received a three, three-zero endorsement from the C E D C and from the planning board.
So, do you wanna send, make a motion to send to advertising as amended?
I would. I ordinarily, I would send it to a committee, but it's, inasmuch as it came from a committee, little sense. But yes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, well, we'll call the roll on sending this as amended to advertising.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yep.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, transfer order F Y eighteen zero one five temporary consulting services, Community and Economic Development. Uh, Mr. Dutton.
Mr. President, this, uh, very simply, uh, covers us in the event that we've got a, uh, more prolonged, uh, absence, uh, down in the Community and Economic Development Office. Gives us the opportunity to hire a consultant if we need to.
Is there a motion to send to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
They're moved.
Made by Mr. Wood.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Wood, discussion?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm, I'm confused about how, the consultants, so is this different than the strategic planning consultant that we, I believe, already agreed to hire?
Yes. This, this would be somebody that can do the nuts and bolts work, the everyday work, um, that may not be getting done right now because we have actually two vacancies in Community and Economic Development.
Mrs. Loesch.
Where are we with hiring for this role?
Uh, we think we're very close, um, and we will probably be extending an offer, uh, within the next
Further discussion on sending to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees? Seeing none, all those in favor will be fined out by calling the roll?
Mrs. Loesch.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to order F Y eighteen zero one six. Acceptance of a gift, gift gazebo renovations. Is there a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Still moved.
Yep.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. Mr. George, discussion?
Appreciate it, appreciate the gift, so, thank you. If it's accepted.
Mr. Wood.
Think budget and finance needs a higher stipend than we're getting certain
Yeah.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to order F Y eighteen zero one seven Town Council Acceptance of Housing Production Plan. Mr. Dutton.
Uh, Mr. President, the housing production plan has gone through, uh, several iterations, and it, uh, is ready for adoption by the council. Once the council adopts, it goes to, uh, Department of Community and Economic, uh, Development, uh, with the state, and gets filed and protects us, uh, somewhat, so it is important to get it done.
And would you suggest it goes to the Community and Economic Development Committee and the planning board?
Uh, that makes the most sense. Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to
So moved.
send it there? Mr. Haley, seconded by?
Second.
George, Mr. Haley, further discussion?
No.
George.
No.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Uh, item O is citizens' comment. We need a motion to take, uh, to suspend our rules to take that up.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. We're not gonna discuss this. We can call the roll, please.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
No.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
No.
Seven in favor, two against.
All right, citizens' comments. Seeing none, we'll take a motion to take, uh, item P up after ten-thirty, uh, in suspension of our rules.
They're moved.
Second.
Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. George. We're gonna have the same roll call vote again?
Yes.
Seven to two. Go ahead and do it.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr.
Show you.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
No.
There's always one.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Columbodis.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one against.
Okay, council comments. Mr. George.
Um. I'm tired, so I'll pass.
Mr. Columbodis.
I've nothing tonight, thanks.
Gallagher.
Just quickly, Mr. President, I just wanna thank the Pritchwater Business Association and those that organized the first-ever Christmas parade for a job well done. I know a lot of us were there. It was, it was nice. It was very festive. It was a beautiful day. They did a great job, as usual.
Thank you. Mr. Haley.
It was great. Um, unfortunately, I missed the memo about the council for the parade, and, um, it was mentioned to me by every counselor that was present at the festivities for the day. Um, Declan and I were at home waiting for a text or anything, and we didn't get it, so we just went to the, to the day. So just so you know, our feelings are hurt as a family. Um, other than that, I enjoyed it thoroughly. I would like a longer parade, and I would like to participate in it. I would like perhaps a little bit later or longer-running Christmas on the Common, and I would love nothing more than to end it with a great tree lighting someday. Thank you.
Mr. Perry.
Uh, thank you. Um, again, I want to echo Mr. Gallagher's sentiments about the Christmas on the Common. I think the addition of the parade this year was a, uh, was a big, uh, drawer of people. The, the place was packed. Um, I hope the crowd stayed throughout the day. I did not stay for the whole day, but, uh, it was, you know, it was a wonderful day for it weather-wise. Um, so, uh, thanks again to the B B A and all the, uh, volunteers and, uh, vendors for a job well done. Uh, as mentioned earlier, I just, I want to welcome, uh, Scott Boyce as the new, uh, collector treasurer, and, uh, I hope he does a good job. Um, I do want to mention, obviously, since we did not, uh, officially take the vote on the, uh, on the ban tonight, um, as it's being postponed, um, despite the, the change, I would still, um, support a, a ban. Um, I also say that due to the fact that, um, uh, as of December fifteenth, I will be, uh, moving my residence here in town to another location in town, uh, which would be out of my precinct. Um, so as, uh, the council rules, I will have to, uh, step down from my position on the council and resign my seats, as well. I will not be residing in the, uh, precinct that I'm representing anymore, so. Um, that being said, like I say, I wanted to make my position known that I'm still in support of a ban, um, but will not be able to cast that vote at the next meeting. Um, secondarily, I certainly would, uh, just want to, uh, thank, uh, all my fellow counselors, um, for the work that we've done together. Um, I certainly have enjoyed my time on the council, not ruling out in the future, but, uh, like I say, for the charter rules, I have to make this change. Um, so I do want to thank all my fellow counselors for the work that we've done over the past number of years, and, uh, my working with the town, uh, attorneys and, and the town manager. Uh, it's been a pleasure to serve the town, and, uh, hopefully I'll get again, uh, a chance to do it again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Uh, again, great job by the business group, uh, to put Christmas on the Common. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to walk around on the street, 'cause it's the one time of year that cars aren't trying to run you down, and I, and I say that sincerely because, uh, as we talk about downtown renovations and revitalization, we need to know from a, from a pedestrian point of view what the whole thing looks like, and it's hard to do that when there's a lot of traffic, um, around. Um, I do agree, um, you know, I miss the, the big reindeer. I hear it's on the other side of town. Uh, the lions, uh, uh, I think put it up over Hanson Farm. Um, and so people get to enjoy it over there. A big tree in this, on the Common for a tree lighting, that'd be an awesome idea. And, um, uh, this whole process about the marijuana ban has, has been quite an educational process. Um, this month, I learned how to make marijuana butter. Um, so, you know, it's just one of these things that you learn about. Um, so I'm almost at talking points, luckily, for everyone here and the audience, and, uh, that's it for me this week.
Thank you.
Mrs. Loesch.
I would implore Mr. Haley to put all his wishes on his list to Santa this Christmas for the Christmas parade. It was great. I want to thank all the volunteers for putting it together. It was a really fun time, and I was able to walk from the school, and I